Good evening, welcome to the planning board meeting for April 22nd. Did I get that right? Twenty-second?
Yes.
Thank goodness. Okay. So, the first item on our agenda is talking about structuring or holding a special meeting to discuss this growth issue in general and a multi-stakeholder event to address it. Should we first start with the proposals that folks are hoping to put forward changes?
Sure.
So, you all three need to sidle up to the table out there.
Okay.
Sure. I think my fingerprint's on your screen now, though.
Do you want another chair? Awesome. And then, just so you know, we have a continuance at 7:30 that will take a minute to vote, but we have until 7:35 essentially to get this started.
Okay. Do you want to introduce?
I'm going to begin, yeah. Feeling a little discombobulated tonight.
That's fine.
But I will, so just to begin with, we had originally proposed two citizens petitions, a three-year and a one-year.
Yep.
And we've decided to remove the three-year from the warrant. After we feedbacked from town council, it seemed like it wouldn't do what we had hoped.
Okay. Can I just ask, process-wise, is it going to be removed or are you going to move no action?
I believe it's been removed, right?
I think it still appears on the warrant because it was a citizens petition and...
Oh, even though we notified you in advance? Okay.
As far as I know, it's still there.
Okay.
Yeah. So, we just need to know what, you just need to know what you have to do to speak to that. And I presume it's move no action?
Wouldn't be a motion to...
Yeah. Yeah. And it doesn't mean that somebody won't oppose that motion, right?
Okay.
Okay.
And I, and I just, just to speak to that for a minute, in the Article 36 that we have here, some, there's something going on with the wording of the way it was originally that made it a little bit hard for me to follow. It's missing the three-year component completely unless I'm not reading. I just skimmed it quickly because we just received it, but it's, it's missing that identifier so that in the final warrant, it would be, if it's not too late, it would be great to have it notified as a, as the three-year, like up by the Article 36 subdivision, garden parks, village apartments, so that other people can understand what we're striking when we strike it.
So, your question is to the draft of your Article 37. Is that right?
The Article number is, the town meeting Article number is 40.
Okay.
It's very confusing because the article in the bylaw would be...
Yep, yep.
Right. Thirty-six, right?
Okay. So, there's only one Article, so there's only one Article 40? So, because it doesn't, when you go on to here, there's no, there's no Article that would state it would be 41 or...
Yeah, Elaine, how does that work?
Yeah.
The last page doesn't have an Article number at the top. It doesn't have...
For annual town meeting.
Article 41.
It's at the bottom of the page before our address.
Oh, it's not on ours.
Oh, it's not on ours. You can just cut off.
Okay.
So, it would be 41 technically?
It is 41.
Oh, it's 41. Okay.
So, the one that you are still hoping to speak to is going to be, is Article 41 on the warrant?
Yes.
Just for the publics? Okay. An Article 40 on the warrant is the one that you are hoping to move no action?
Yes, for no action, yeah.
No action.
Or whatever.
Yeah.
So, does this one have our suggested changes yet?
I don't think it does.
Did it go to the link?
Yeah, it did.
Is this the, the one with suggested changes in it after we revised this on town council?
Whatever town council had left.
Okay.
No, because I sent it to them, I don't think it's been updated yet.
So, we don't have in front of us what you're hoping to change. So, why don't you just...
Summarize?
Yeah, do the layman's thing and we'll look at the, the actual language.
Right. The town council's feedback was that there was not enough detail on a specific planning method.
Yep.
So, we had added in a paragraph on that. It says, "To accomplish this, the town shall establish a growth study committee, as I'd previously did on 1995 during another period of rapid growth comprised of community members and town officials appointed jointly with the planning board, by the planning board and Board of Selectmen no later than August 1st, 2019. The purpose of the committee shall be to objectively research the impact of growth and identify a proactive approach to managing growth. The committee, which will gather feedback from the community in a variety of ways, including but not limiting to conducting surveys, holding forums, researching how other towns have managed rapid growth. The committee will analyze recent large developments and provide an analysis of whether all, whether there was an overall net positive financial impact. The committee will create a development schedule that will relate to the timing of residential development, to the town's ability to provide services. The one-year slowing of new building apartments proposed in this article will allow for effective review of municipal service impacts by development type."
Sorry, Amy, just to confirm, what you're reading to us, we don't have a copy.
Yes, unfortunately not.
Is it related to an Arti, an article?
It is related to this draft that is in front of us.
So, the last page of your handouts, it's, it's the revised version of that.
Okay.
And so, we, you, we'll send it out shortly.
So, the language for the warrant has to be finalized tomorrow.
And Elaine and council has, have received it. It was in a, it was in a separate email on Friday. And town council got back to us, he was under the weather, and he had gotten back to us as far as the response to it. And he said that he felt with possibly trimming up a little bit of the wording, but it wasn't absolutely necessary, that it would, it was very likely that the Attorney General would pass it.
So, let me just get this straight. We sent town council the new language this past Friday?
Yeah, so that was right before you started.
So, you're not even, you're not even making the deadline for this, right? For our meeting?
No.
I have raised response, but there's no attachment, so I don't have the article. You sent that to me.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Can you tell me one more time what you propose the growth study committee to be comprised of?
So, appointed by a selectman and planning board. We left it vague in community members and elected officials.
So, the, the growth study committee would be appointed by the planning board and the selectmen?
Jointly.
Jointly.
No later than August 1st by community members and town officials.
Community members, town officials. Go ahead, Gary.
So, just a clarifying question, do we need to go to town meeting to establish a committee to establish, to evaluate growth? It feels like there's kind of two different things here. One of them is a, is a restriction on building and the other one is forming a committee. And I guess what I don't understand is why are we, like, we should be forming the committee anyways, because what happens if this doesn't pass at town meeting? Now, does that mean we can't, we shouldn't form the committee to evaluate it either?
No, we were asked, we were asked to derive some parameters to what, what are, what we wanted to accomplish in this, during this one year. And so, what we put our heads together was what, what we would define during this period. So, if this did go through in, in the town meeting, we would then both put our heads together, both with the selectmen and the planning board, and put together a committee.
See, you can't have a temporary moratorium without a specific planning purpose. So, this was to define the specific planning purpose that would allow us to have a...
And that specific planning purpose needs to be actually in the, the warrant article itself?
Correct.
Right.
But that's our understanding.
In order for it to pass muster for the Attorney General for the moratorium.
Right. As does, just as important is defining the period of time and, and the parameters of it.
Okay. All right. Did you, did you tell me all, all the pieces? It's very hard to, so, Amy, I know you read it and you read it really quickly.
I know, I'm sorry.
Right? So, can you tell me the big pieces that you've put in for your planning process? There's the growth study.
A committee would be appointed by August 1st.
Yeah.
And the committee, committee's purpose would be to objectively research the impact of growth and identify a proactive approach to managing growth.
Okay.
And the committee would, I think they would have to present their research, like, the following town meeting, following annual town meeting, I believe.
That would be town meeting 2020?
Correct.
Yes.
Was there any discussion as to the size of the committee or is that purposely left vague?
Purposely left vague.
So, I guess, may I ask a question?
Absolutely.
I'm along with Gary, I'd maybe a little different, but I'm not sure why a committee would be in zoning article.
Yeah, so, it's feedback from the town council to their proposed citizens petition article. So, this is a, this, just for the public certification and to remind people, this is outside of the typical process. So, this isn't the planning board's article, but, but it certainly is the planning board's issue.
Sure.
Right? And so, the feedback from town council was that, that absent some mechanism for study or planning purpose, that the citizens petition might not pass muster with the Attorney General.
So, can I, can I just add to that or paraphrase it in a different way? This is my understanding?
Yeah.
Is that we have to have a reason to impose this moratorium? And in this situation, the reason to impose the moratorium is to study and evaluate growth and come up with a strategy by which to deal with it. And without having that, without having that, that reason, then it could be conceived as an over-restrictive policy. And, and so, that's why it, it's important to link the two. That's kind of what I'm...
Correct.
From everyone saying.
Nothing keeps us from taking the initiative to establish the, the drive for the committee to do this growth study thing, right? That, there are two...
You could, you could do it without a town meeting, of course.
My concern is usually when we put zoning articles in, it's defended and it's there at the last. This one, we're going to have to go in and update down the road?
This is just a one-year thing.
It would expire.
It expires, although it's often.
But it's still an article that we're adding to the zoning.
It is, it is. No, your point, I understand your point.
It's only valid for a year.
So, then, does it, like, after that year, does it just automatically, like, in the next revision of the zoning, it just disappears? Or do we have to take any action or...
It remains there, it's just not effective anymore. In some future town meeting, we can go and have it removed. We have to vote to...
So, we have to vote to remove the expired zoning article?
We've had other articles like this before.
Yeah. The marijuana one was like, I don't know if we voted to take it off, but the marijuana...
It was a temporary.
What was a temporary moratorium?
Good point.
Okay. So, do you want to just, big picture, tell us what you hope to achieve with this at town meeting for the folks at home? Really specifically?
Okay. We were hoping to allow citizens to have a chance to weigh in on this topic that is a hot topic on everyone's mind and they, they wish they could have a forum to speak about it rather than just coming when each individual project comes before the planning board, rather that we're looking at it more holistically and they could speak about it.
Yeah. And that would be accomplished with your growth study commission as well. So, we could accomplish that, and I would argue that we need to accomplish that outside of a zoning article, honestly. I'm still, still there. We are, we are arguably rushing the deadlines and actually not meeting the deadlines.
So, I mean, I guess, I agree with you, Mariel. I think we need to recommend forming this committee, and I'm wondering if even we can recommend that we form a committee in, you know, with the selectmen? And at least if we already start that process, then to me, that might help to some degree at town meeting even to, to show that we've already started this process. We're not going to have it formed or we're not going to have all the details worked out by then, but at least if we even start it, then at least that shows the community that we've already, we've already started this, this, this process of evaluating and figuring out how to rein it in. That's, that's my opinion.
I, a thousand percent support the idea of a collective, all stakeholder in, and I'm sorry to interrupt it. Go ahead.
No, I think you're, we're going to speak the same.
Well, we can, to Gary's point, we can make a motion for that tonight and include these guys on this side of the bench, right?
We can talk about that, absolute includes, yes, yes. So, we're, we're, we have already voted not to support the citizens article. Were you hoping that we would reconsider that, the citizens petition article necessarily?
No, not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
All right. So, that new language, if it stays on the warrant and you want it on the warrant, has to get to town hall by tomorrow morning.
I just sent it to town council now, so...
Okay.
She sent it to...
Right, because the warrant is finalized tomorrow.
Things can be amended on the floor of town meeting, though.
Oh, absolutely. Things can be amended on town meeting floor and, and it would be worth, it would probably be worth having a handout to, to, for everybody to know how to do that this year because this isn't the only, only article that people are, are interested in and it's just a piece of information for the public that makes it quicker. Okay. So, if we're not going to reconsider the article, do you want to, like, jump back on the board and talk about the, the committee formation, the idea more completely? Because that, that feels more comfortable for me.
Are you guys sure?
I think us as a board is more comfortable.
Yes. I concur.
I don't care.
You've been very quiet. It's my nature.
Thoughts?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
So, just while you guys are repositioning, I want to make sure that, that the formation of this study committee, I think very definitely has to have the school committee involved as well and maybe other leadership groups.
I, I have a list, if that helps.
I'm sorry?
I have a list of members that could potentially be on it.
Yes, that wasn't what I was saying. I was saying to form, form, form the group, right? I, I think the list will be very helpful. We all have lists, right, of who should be considered to be part of the group?
Oh, not people, but, but people.
Criteria.
Right, right. Stakeholder groups that should be included.
Stakeholder, yes.
Yes, okay. But for the deciding, appointing, evaluating, forming this study commission, it jumps into my head that certainly the school superintendent?
Yes.
And the police chief and the fire chief and the DPW should be in that conversation as that is, is being formulated and had, right, have a, have a voice or a vote.
May I ask a process question?
You may.
Maybe it's not a process question, but I'm curious if we have the ability as a planning board to form this committee or if we need the selectmen to do it jointly? And the only reason I'm asking is that from an efficiency perspective, just even to do a joint meeting just adds another step.
No, you're exactly right.
And if this falls under the jurisdiction of the planning board, then maybe we should just take initiative and do it.
I agree, I agree. I agree. That's the other, that's the other way. And then to make sure we invite all the stakeholders that we, we envision. What do you guys think?
So, is that a question for Elaine?
So, you do have the ability to invite them.
Yeah.
I think that should be taken up.
I, I definitely think that that is certainly an idea that is attractive to me as well, but not to exclude anybody, but to streamline the organization process is how I think about it.
That makes sense, yeah.
Do we need to make a motion for that?
So, I, I don't know that we need to make a, well, we can make a motion. What are, we have, we have effectively 15 minutes right now. Shall we knock off the constituency groups that we would like to see part of this study committee?
Would that be part of the motion?
Yeah, I would, I mean, I think we're going to form an ad hoc group and not necessarily, it would be my suggestion to not necessarily mandate participation, but certainly invitation to a constituency group. We can't make people participate.
No, sure. I was just thinking that, let's get our, what we want asked and make it a motion and we all vote.
No, I think so.
So, how about we go around the ta, table? Do you, you have your list to start with of constituency groups?
I have a developer, a developer in town, someone who's involved with the economic development committee from the chamber, three citizens at large, a member of open space, a member of the conservation committee, and then you mentioned a few others, the school committee, fire, police, DPW. And then somebody from historic district, zoning board of appeals, and other liaisons, I don't know.
Planning?
Yeah, and planning.
Yeah. Okay. So, here's an interesting question I have. I wrote down the Chamber of Commerce. Do you have others that jumped into your head?
I would, personally, I would be more in favor of leaving it as a smaller group of town representatives.
Right, and have the study involved.
Opening up a little bit more to just citizens at large.
Yep.
And limit the town participation to people that actually have a stake in it. The conservation commission, I think they have a stake in, in what happens in town, but I don't think they have a stake necessarily in planning things. They look at an individual development and protect their interests, so I'm not sure that they would really add a lot to the conversation, whereas the fire department can come in and say, you know, if we build 200 more homes, we're going to have a problem. And the police can tell you that, and DPW can tell you that. And I'm not sure that conservation commission or the historic district commission is necessarily going to add...
My concerns...
Hold on, Deb. We're not, we're not discussing yet, we're getting feedback.
I don't necessarily think those people would add to the conversation to making it a, a productive discussion.
So, let me, thank you. Let me just, let me just say that for a study committee, this, this is unwieldy, right? But if we have a study committee that, that we, for me, like, that's how I vote, right? This is unwieldy, this group. But if we have a smaller study committee that is, that is intentionally going to reach out to these other constituency groups, that makes way better sense to me. So, just saying that out. So, what I really want to know right now, if it's possible, is it, what constituency groups do we want to make sure we capture? And then how do we want to define that?
I would say town services.
I agree.
Anything related to town service, I think you need to include.
Okay.
And if we want to be more specific, that would be...
Hold on one second. I'm, I'm just going to come around the table, but I definitely want to hear everybody.
Yeah, agreed, just, but like Gary, I'd like to know, so that includes DPW, fire, police, and even, sorry, and school?
Yes, I have those on my list.
Those four?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that.
The groups all sounded good to me. I was going to mention that the, the group that was formed in 2009, or 1995, had 14 members, in case, for a point of reference.
So, I don't know how much I ca, I was part of that and it was a wonderful, rich experience on the, on the, on the, on the citizens involvement idea, so I'm not dismissing that as a, as an, as a starting point, but I don't know that I care if they had 14 members particularly. What was their constituency group when they did it?
Let me just, I don't know if I can list them out here. I can come, you can come back to me.
Okay.
So, I, I'm, general agreement there. I would like to expand it a little bit, somebody from either the chamber or from an economic standpoint, just to make sure their, their input is, their voices are...
Yeah.
Okay, I found it.
Okay.
So, it was five members of the planning board, five community members at large, and four members of the development community?
Four members.
Not that we have to do it that way, but just for reference.
Right. So, that's interesting, right? That it's very different than what we are talking about here. Just interesting as a point of, and if, that culminated, right, in the voices for vision? Is that right? Is that the same time?
This was earlier. Maybe the voice, I can't remember what year the voices of visions was. I thought that was later.
I don't know. I don't, I don't know. We go back and research history. Karen?
I agree on services. I also support keeping the group smaller rather than larger. I think that as committees, we do a really good job of collecting input and there's always an opportunity to ask other committees to engage when appropriate. But I think just from an efficiency perspective and a meeting perspective, I'm, I prefer to keep it generally smaller rather than larger.
I feel that we need people on the committee who provide data. So, financial, school committee, the town services has been discussed, but I'm not sure what is appropriate from the financial side, whether it's committee members or town staff personnel or, well, in addition to community members, but, but I, I think that's just part of it.
Yeah, yeah. Can I just ask this from a, just because we're sort of mushing this around? Is there any, any appetite for recommending some professional support in the, in the planning field?
Yeah. That, for, for one thing, I, I had asked Elaine recently, just in the context of zoning advisory committee, whether or not certain data was available and, and, you know, you'd, you'd, you know, mentioned to me that in the past that had been done by consultants. It's not the type of parsing of financial information that we normally do. And so, yes, so, me as well.
So, Voices of Vision was 2003, so eight years after the growth study.
Yeah, so, and then I found another one. The presentation essentially was, the members were made up of employees from the town, co-chairs of the appropriation, the school committee.
What's this?
What's this?
This was the FPWG report presentation, the Financial Plan Working Group.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And...
I was part of that.
That's the 2007 one?
That's the 2007 one.
So, what did...
And that was about, that was a lot of people.
Yeah. What was, and that was Phil Totino, Phil Totino kind of authored and spearheaded that, so that would be an interesting person to ask about. What did the 1995 study, growth study committee, what, what was the product?
Other than the report?
It was a report?
Yeah, there was recommendations.
Yeah, the recommendations, they were the ones that you sent me, Elaine. So, what they were, we selectively encouraged commercial industrial expansion, and apparently all of these things were accomplished. Address property tax lag for new development. One was determined not to be legal. Two was done with new legislation passed. The plan for capital improvements, number one, capital planning process was improved via new general bylaw, and it was eventually in the charter. Number two, there was a follow-up study where the consultant worked with the town to develop a way to identify and rank parcels of interest. The methodology is now a part of the open space and recreation plan and a ranking system methodology is in there. Preserve land for open space, rural character, number one, has been a long-time goal for planning board, but there's been thorny issues that have come up, talking to land owners, so it hasn't advanced much. Number two, I believe that this eventually led to special legislation that was created, open space preservation commission.
Is that how that, okay.
Number three, not sure, but I think the work has continued and I'm just trying to summarize it.
So, I think, so...
So, there were, there were continuations to different things that got filtered out through...
So, let me, let me recommend that we, we set aside time to talk, talk about this, formulating the committee, stakeholders, and we get the history that you have, so, so that we can look at that between now and when we talk about it, before the Tuesday, before the Monday that we talk about it. What else should we have in front of us to talk about structuring this?
We should have a rough timeline or maybe a firm timeline.
So, propose a timeline? Yep, okay. So, anybody want to take an action item to craft a timeline?
For tonight or for the last, next meeting?
For the next meeting.
Sure.
Thank you, Amy.
I can work on that.
It's like I do at home. I can't just say someone, I have to, I have to put a name to it or...
Lobster balls?
My kids hate it. Someone, and I pick a name. Oh.
Just one other thing, Madam Chairman, is do we need to kind of have what the goal is for this group? Is that maybe just something Amy mentioned?
Mission, goals, statements, something-
Exactly, right. It could be-
A charge of some kind. A charge of something, I think that's a great idea. Does anybody want to take an action item to work on that?
I can do that.
Okay, Mary. Thank you. I'm going to break here for one second. I am going to entertain a motion to open the public hearing. I think this is last meeting's agenda. Open the public hearing for Massbinock Woods. They have, let me just entertain the motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So they have asked to continue it, but there's a tiny bit of discussion I think that we wanted to have. They asked to continue it to our next meeting, which is our last meeting before the election. So how do people feel about continuing it to the first meeting following the election?
Having been on here since the summer, I've been hearing about these people, and I've never, ever seen them. So I personally would be in favor of trying to finish up some things that are going to be impacted with board members leaving, as opposed to starting something new.
I think that's really, really-
I'd agree with that.
So what is our first meeting in June?
June 10.
June 10. And what would be the deadline for their decision that we would need to ask them to extend to?
The attorney has agreed to have a deadline a week after the meeting.
A week after the meeting?
It was kind of having May 13.
Yeah, yeah.
To basically have another week to come up with this decision.
All right. So is it June 10th? Is the June meeting?
June 10 would be the meeting, the first meeting in June. So if we follow that rule, then June 17 would be the decision.
Okay.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question? What happens if we don't vote to extend it? Because personally, I'm kind of like, I'm tired of these constant scheduling, meeting times, and extending, and extending again, and extending again. And it just feels, to me, it's inefficient, and to be honest, I think just, at some point, it's a little bit unprofessional. And I don't know if there's, are there any other options? Like, what happens if we don't extend it?
Without making a decision, it would be approved, I think, by the Board.
Okay. So we have no choice. We have no choice but to extend it, but we could opt to-
Well, we can vote to.
Just not approve it, deny it.
Or approve.
Or approve it.
So for what it's worth, I'm not saying that now is the time to do this, but I would personally like to start enforcing some of this stuff a little bit more closely with some of the applicants, because I just, and again, I'm not going to throw them a, you know-
A curve ball.
A curve ball here, but I just, to me, it's gotten very frustrating with the constant-
Is there, has there ever been a limit of the number of times that somebody has passed? Is there possible that we set a limit?
So I actually don't necessarily think that that's the best idea, but these, one of the things we've, steps we've taken to try and mitigate for it is, for example, giving them five minutes, because I keep delay. Remember, there was a time we would sit here twiddling our thumbs for half hour because they didn't come. So I do think that that's at least a very, very reasonable approach.
I just wanted to add that they went to the design review board in April and were asked to go back to the design review board on May 21st. So they can't really come back to us again until after that.
Okay.
Right, so-
So we're not imposing, certainly not imposing on them, and- And does professional staff have any input or thoughts?
If it goes on for too long, you could ask them to withdraw, and we submit when they're ready.
Are they going to be short of board members to vote? So we're going to, two board members will be changing, right?
We haven't opened, we haven't had any discussion-
We haven't even opened it.
No.
So can I ask a question about clarity? Because is this the same loop where the folks came in, where some of the houses were too close to one another's?
Yes, yes. Different issue. This is about the house in front that they-
Okay, just about the house in front?
Right.
That's one of the two.
Now, there's another, I believe there's another proposal now.
Since units 21, 22, 23, 24. So they, but they have been here once, because they had that discussion.
For a different project.
But for a different thing.
Same project, different lots.
Same developer, same developments.
Okay.
Yes.
So are they, they built half of them, and this is future ones to be built? Or, I'm just trying to understand it.
This is a new set of questions, new units with a new set of questions.
New units.
They're slightly modified.
Not additional units, but new questions on different units than we resolved before.
And so they're not building them at this point? There's no building-
No, there's like three units, I drove by it yesterday. There's like three units still to be built. And I believe that these questions or modifications are for those three units. So that's part of it.
Thank you.
The other part is they've got the property, they have five west down. West down, yeah. So essentially, it's like backing up to the development itself. And they want to be able to kind of move the-
The house.
The line, right, so the 100-foot buffer zone, they want to reduce it.
Just as a process question, I think we're discussing too much for a hearing that's not happening.
Okay.
Well, I just want to understand-
Just clarifying. We opened it.
I want to understand what we're-
So hold on one second. We're going to, we're going to just vote to open the continued public hearing for 76 Main Street, and to continue until we resolve this conversation in a matter of moments.
I'll make the motion to open the public hearing for 76 Main Street.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right. So my proposal is to continue this until the June 10th meeting. At what time? Hopefully, that won't be a big challenge.
So that would make 7:35.
7:35, okay. And should we give them feedback that we're, you know, we're really seriously contemplating, sending them back, you know, asking them to withdraw until they're ready?
Yes.
At that point?
My opinion, yes.
Well, I think this time, this one, this one scenario, I think they're done. I think they're almost ready to just give it to us. I just think that the architect hadn't finished the project.
But we, we're not talking about that. Should, we can either tell them that or not tell them that.
Not tell them that.
To inform them.
I don't think so.
You're not telling. How about everybody else?
I don't think we need to tell them either.
Okay, all right. So continue to June 10th, and the decision will be continued till June 17th. Somebody willing to make that motion directly?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah, I motioned it, but then-
Okay, do we, second. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Did we extend the deadline for the-
Yeah. The decision. Yep, thank you, though. I always appreciate help. Okay. I mean, I'm going to use your packet, we're not going to share. All right, so we are ready for 76 Main Street, and then we'll come back to, yep. We'll come back to the conversation you were having. 76 Main Street?
Uh, the applicant, there they are.
You don't have to outline it?
Yeah, of course I do.
Come on. You can't leave.
You underestimated me.
All right. Can I get on the camera from there? That's the real question.
Okay, good, yep.
Yep, I don't have it up here yet, but I'm guessing it's kind of-
Yep.
Okay. Would you like to start by outlining your changes?
Sure, we can go ahead and do that.
Okay.
So changes since we last met, taking into account the comments received from the Assistant Town Manager and a few remaining comments, I believe, from BETA. We just wanted to provide a quick update on the change of the uses, and then how we address that. So the comment was made that office space was not permissible in the mixed-use buildings. So we have revised to do just a combination of retail and restaurant on the first floor, keeping the residential units on the second and third floor. The impact to that was the change in parking calculations based on the retail uses versus office uses. So we provided updated calculations for all the parking. And then to proactively address the comments received from the board, as well as some of the concerns expressed last time, we are proposing to take the basement area that we had shown or discussed and change that into an underground parking garage that would provide 30 parking spaces that would be dedicated for the residential tenants. So when we look at our revised mix, as well as the revised parking, both underground, above ground, we now are at a total of 94 parking spaces on the property. 71 spaces are required, so we have a surplus of around 23 parking spaces at this point. So we have provided all the revised calculations there, and have updated the site plan, which we can go through today if you'd like to reflect the revised kind of flow for the parking garage.
Okay.
And those are the biggest changes from the site perspective.
Quite simply, the plan previously, we just had parking stalls in this area right over here. So simply, what we did centered on this wall of the building, is we cut out drive aisle here, put some landscape islands on either way, so that you can enter into the garage, ramp down, and have the parking, it's double-loaded parking on either side. So the site blended itself quite well to be able to do that. And as Kathy mentioned, if we think proactively, we wanted to provide more parking based on some of the comments that we heard. It was a good opportunity to do that with the basement that was shown, expanded it, and just added some stalls there. The site itself really is unchanged, short of that area there.
Question, regarding that. So one of my big concerns was not a way to loop around the parking lot. Does the garage have the ability to loop around in it so somebody would not have to back up?
So the garage, it's single-loaded. As you come in, you have parking on either side. One of the comments that we had, I believe it was in Elaine's letter, just had to do with designating parking stalls for the residential use. So what will happen is we need about 40 stalls to designate. The 30 within the basement will be dedicated spaces. So as you go in, you have, you know which parking stall is yours. You're not just going in and looking for one. So everybody will have an assigned spot here, and then there will be 10.
John, we have the plan. If you want to speak, show that or speak to me.
The interior of the-
It's the interior of the garage.
So that's the plan there. As you ramp down, it's oriented the same way. The building's here, you ramp down, and you have double-loaded parking on either side here. Standard parking stall sizes and drive aisle widths that would comply with U code. Same as what's outside. And again, those would just be assigned, so you know which stall is yours if you're going to your own stall.
So I think the answer is no.
Correct.
No.
And just a follow-up question. It sounds like there will be assignments as for residential only?
Yes.
Yes.
There'll actually be a, a code in, so that would go up. Nobody could just drive in there, you know, without the key access.
And then we'll have additional designated spaces, because we need 40 total for the residential. There'll be 10 in the back of the site, and those will be signed.
And always maintained, or I thought it said during certain hours.
Those 10 would be at certain times, based on the final retail tenant mix. So reserved during certain hours.
How about from our professional planning folks? Any, is there any challenge to doing an underground garage? I don't know that I, is there any place else we've done that?
There have been plans that have shown it, but no one has built it.
Okay, all right. But no, there's nothing that keeps us from doing that. Okay.
And a question. In access to that underground garage, is it a stairwell? One or two stairwells that go down from the-
Well, including correctly, people correctly, but as you come into the garage, you've got your elevator lobby in there, and a stairwell here to walk through.
Yeah, both.
Anybody else on the parking changes?
I guess I had a question about emergency vehicles. Can you show how the fire trucks or whatever would turn around in the back now with the new design?
Yeah, it's unchanged from last time, but we've run the templates for the fire truck and emergency vehicle. Essentially, you can come in, come this way, you have, show them this. But this area here, it shows up as green, it's a structural grass. It's actually like a honeycomb structure that goes in there, so you can drive on top of that. We don't put any plantings in there, so it's open. But they have a larger vehicle, they could kind of pull in here and turn around. I think it was a nice way to keep some landscaping, and not put more paving than we needed to. Not just show some of the movements with how that would work.
So we still have vehicles needing to back up and to turn around?
Yes.
So to turn around, so for instance, say somebody came in here and parked to load or something like that, they would continue on, they would just do essentially a K-turn in that area to leave, rather than try to do a turn in here, which a lot of places will do, which we didn't want to have that in this lot. So we want to provide an area where you can turn in here, do a simple K-turn maneuver, and then exit back in.
What?
Yes.
Snow storage in the winter?
Yeah, we have snow storage dedicated on the plan in a couple different areas. Over in this area, we have some storage. Over in this area, we have some storage. If, so if a very, very large storm and not able to store it there, it would have to be removed. I think having additional parking spaces now actually helps that quite a bit. That's, that's where we get spots there.
Was that your question too, or did you-
No, mine, it was, I was just wondering what size loading area, what size truck could occupy that loading area for the-
It's designed for a box truck. We don't have a, we're restricting that access. You're not going to have a semi coming in and out of there and loading.
Okay. Is that normal for the size, the businesses, the size of businesses that are, you know, proposed here?
Yes.
Yeah, I, the snow removal is a concern still. You know, I do think that you've increased it slightly from the previous plans, but I'm just envisioning the, you know, how they're removing snow, even from the access area to the garage underneath and straight across. It's, you know, going into trees, and I could definitely see you having some snow issues sometimes, so.
Yeah, it'll need to be managed.
Can I ask?
I have a comment and a question, and then maybe a comment. And first, I applaud the developer on looking into this. I know from previous comments how financially challenging this site is, and I can't imagine what underground parking costs. So I think that's great that they refined a way to add some parking spots. With a garbage truck coming in, are they going to make that left turn back to that back parking area? Because I know that they can pull forward and then back up, but I guess I'm looking at the radius on the corner of the building there. Yeah, that looks really challenging to me.
Wouldn't that be the same for a fire truck?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, we've run the templates on that. Again, it's a two-way aisle, so it's coming along the outside, so. But yeah, it's the same, same thing. There is enough room for them to make that maneuver there.
Okay, okay. And then I guess my, still my big concern, which I brought up last time, and I think this actually is somewhat worse with the underground parking, is if somebody pulls in an underground parking spot and the spots are full, then now they're having to back all the way out, up a ramp, a blind back-in into that spot where the dumpster is, and then they can pull out. And I just, I worry, like, there's such a long one-way route without a turnaround at the other end, other than driving over a honeycomb grass strip that's halfway. It just, it just seems very challenging. If people come in looking for a parking spot, there aren't any parking spots, and now, I don't know what they do. So like, for me-
You're talking in the garage or in the back?
Both inside and out, both inside and out. Because I looked at your inside plan, and there's spots all the way to the end.
Correct.
But they're assigned.
They're assigned.
Yes, they're assigned parking spaces.
And it'll be controlled access to the garage.
Okay. But there's still, are those reserved spots all the time? Or so there'd be 30 spots, there'd be as a reserved spot?
Right, and they'll have their own key card essentially to get in, so you wouldn't be able to get in without that. And then that gives you access to that particular-
Okay, that's good. And then I'd still go back to those last two spots. I don't understand how they back out, because you need to have someplace to back into to pull forward.
You don't, you don't have to do the, you can pull in and come straight back. You don't have to, if you had a wall there, you obviously, you can't make that maneuver like you're saying. But in urban areas, that's really what happens. There's enough room to back out with a 24-foot aisle, straight out, and then to make a hard, a hard left or a hard right, depending on what side you park.
I don't agree. If you have a car that's 19 feet long, you can't do that without having to go back some angle. I mean, there's just, I mean, it's a 14-point turn. I don't agree with that.
Sorry, I had one more point. And this is not just for you, but just for, in general. The concept of the minimum parking spaces- The concept of the minimum parking spaces that we have in our zoning bylaws are truly a minimum and really should not be looked at by any developers as this is all that's needed for my development. And I appreciate the, what you say, excess now, you know, ninety-four spots, I think is much more of an adequate parking for this type of development. We want businesses to be successful, we want the residents to have a place to park without, you know, without going onto the street or other things, and I think it's very important to consider that. As much as we might want to see that people are using public transportation and so on, you know, the reality is that we're suburban and people have cars, and we need places for people to park if they're going to use these businesses, if they're going to come to this restaurant, and if they're going to live there. And, but I do appreciate the changes that we've made that provide much more than the minimum, because the minimum is not designed to be just what you're going to need.
Amy, did you have?
Oh, I was wondering about the delivery trucks. How many delivery box trucks can fit in the, in the delivery location?
I'm sorry, say it.
The box trucks, the delivery trucks, how many can fit in that designated area?
It's designed for one at a time.
Just one.
It's not meant to be stacked up.
It just concerns me that the site is so challenged with space. If two were to come in the same half-an-hour period, like, how do they get past each other and, without getting cars, and get turned around and get out? Or do they block the entrance?
I think that would be extremely rare that that would happen. It's not a high-delivery type of a, type of a use.
Restaurants.
Restaurants, I would imagine would be.
Deliveries, though, they'll come every few days, it's not, it's not, like, you've got constantly coming.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
So I think it's very rare that that would, that that would happen. Deliveries are going to be generally on off-peak hours as well, so if there happened to be a situation when you had a delivery truck that was, that was there, another one happened to show up, a lot likely wouldn't be full, you're not going to be coming right at the main, you know, hour where the restaurant's in business, or something along those lines. That would be the case, they could just simply pull off.
I was thinking that because it's mixed-use, so it's not a peak hour for the business early in the morning, but the residents will all be there because they won't have left yet, so the sites can still be pretty full.
Yeah, but the residents will be in the garage now, so again, there's only going to be ten stalls in the back that would be out, so.
Okay.
I think with the amount of parking there, definitely is more than adequate for the uses.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I think if my numbers are right, it's a thirty percent increase in the number of spaces. I mean, to your point, you could almost take one of the spots in the back, if you needed more space to be able to turn back in there, you've got it, right? You've got twenty-three more spots to be able, you've got some flexibility. On that, I think it also helps a little bit with delivery trucks, depending on if it's a restaurant in the front or how they're going to do it, right, but it's going to be the retail piece. I don't know when delivery trucks arrive, I assume in the morning, right, so that should mitigate some of the traffic issues coming back and forth.
Correct.
Through the chair.
Yes.
So I still have a big concern about the traffic flow in the parking lot with all the, as Gary said, with all the parking spots full. So if you have three cars coming in, you get to the dead end, and you're going to have three cars being backing up at the same time trying to reverse direction. I wanted to ask our engineer and her, Elaine, some of the input on this, but I don't know if now is the right time.
So let me, let me suggest that it is on the agenda specifically, and we'll march down to it.
Okay.
Because I have a few, I think we all have some more questions. The parking, I'll be candid, the parking is a challenging contemplation for me. And I, like Fran said, I think that, and Gary's point, I think that contemplating losing a couple of your extra spots to make it a more visionable flow and turnaround is probably sensible. But we can talk about that more at length when we get to the parking in particular. Just looking this way, Elaine, do you have anything more to add specifically as we get started marching through the agenda?
No.
And there's no changes from engineering standpoint? They're all set, right? Beta's all set? Okay. Oh, you know what? We have parking lot layout and vehicular pedestrian flow in two different spots. Should we just, like, crush those? We're going to, we're going to do both of those. Is there anything else? All right. So let's, let's ask all our questions on vehicular pedestrian traffic flow, truck traffic flow, emergency vehicle access, parking lot layout, dumpster location, snow stores and snow removal. I also have a question about the, how we control for deliveries arriving, scheduling deliveries at off-peak hours and making sure that that happens. That's a really tough street, and I know a delivery truck is only one, one truck coming in or out, but that is a really challenging spot. So, and then we will also open it up to the public for questions on all of those topics that are part of the parking lot, part of the traffic flow. Okay. So, so we're specifically, we started talking about it, does anybody have any, I mean, are we going to be held up? Where are your, where are your sticking point on the parking, traffic flow, pedestrian safety? We've got the board members, Deb.
I, I have some real concerns about the general width of the parking, the going and coming access, whether it's wide enough. I'm just feeling like this is what you do when you don't have space, you overfill it, but we're in the suburbs, and I just don't feel that this type of density and the type of traffic that we're going to be putting on this site is going to bear what we're going to want to live with in the future. I just think it's too narrow. We're living with it down in, by the bank and by Starbucks, and I, in a heavy-trafficked area, I won't go into that parking lot. It's just too much. So I have some real questions to, about that.
Are you?
I'm looking at a twenty, I'm looking at a nineteen, twenty-foot space, and then I'm, just with my pencil, I'm looking at what seems to be the same amount of space lengthwise. How, how wide actually is that drive access?
When you say the drive, are you referring to parking stalls or the driveway?
No, the driveway.
The roadway between, so that's the, where your arrows are going, left and right.
All the way through, from here?
Yep, going back and forth.
Why is that between parking spaces?
Between parks?
Yes.
I'm sorry. It's standard, standard, what, it's a twenty, twenty-four-foot drive aisle?
Standard to what standards?
General engineering practice.
So if you're, so it's twenty-four foot. So is Starbucks less than twenty-four feet?
I don't know.
So what, what we're, the pressure that we're feeling is that what, what is new standard may not be what is the standard for Hopkinton. I'm finding this to be very, very tight, twenty-four feet, it just seems like it's overly, it's a lot of weight on this site, and that there's not going to be enough. Everybody seems to be concerned about whether the trucks are going to be coming on and that you've done the plan, but I'm, but I'm still seeing a lot of unhappy people coming in and out of the site, just because it's a dead-end, a dead-end delivery.
So the site and the width, John, you can speak to this, is built to the town's standards as well as defined here. And based on the, our traffic consultants, as been verified by, by beta, as well as Bowler's input, the traffic flow, the increased trip can all be supported with, by the site design.
I think it's the same thing as the price chopper. So do you think that's narrow? I mean, I haven't gone and measured it, but I think that's twenty-four feet also.
I think we should go measure.
Okay, I mean, not that, again, we're conforming regardless, but I think if you even go into Stop &amp; Shop, you go to Market Basket, they're all going to pretty much be in the twenty-four-foot range.
It's an industry standard.
It's really, everyone's making this site so tight. This site is actually, works very, very well.
Well, I think, I think...
No back and forth, okay. Carol?
Is it, is it twenty-four feet around the corner too? Because just from my angle, it looks narrow.
From your angle, but it's a hundred percent compliant, as well as industry standard at the twenty-four-foot aisles.
Through the chair, a quick comment?
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't think it's fair to compare it to Price Chopper, because there's, you can loop around, you don't have to back up in Price Chopper.
So, okay, I, I actually don't want to compare it to other spots either, because we're, we're not talking about Price Chopper or anything else, we're talking about this one. And I, I'm rhythming with the fact that it's, it's constraining and difficult, right, and I think the board members are feeling that. And, and I do think that no ability to loop around does, is a different kind of challenge for us. But it doesn't mean we can't figure it out, I'm just saying that I, I think it's different too. Yes?
Just one last question, the hatch space on the, this side of the, yeah, what's that?
I presented that the last, the initial introduction, but I apologize for not revisiting that. So if you're, this goes to your comments, when you, when you come in here, again, these spaces are free spaces, you can park wherever, wherever. In the odd chance that every single one of these spaces were filled, which that would be happening with a lot of parking here, but in the odd chance that it was, this space is designated no parking, so that's why we would strike it out. So if you come all the way down here and you couldn't find a stall, you can turn in here to make a, to make a turn. You can break the turn in the garage, but we added another, for the entry to the garage to turn around, and we added another stall here just to be safe, where you can come in, so you don't get trapped, and then you can turn around. And just to take it a step further, you've heard the same comment about the garage, we can strike, strike a spot up around the garage as well.
I'm sorry, say that again.
We can do this in the garage as well, that last stall, we could certainly that out as well. That's not a, that's not a problem.
Carol, did you have a follow-up question?
No, I just, I think the striped spot addresses Gary's question of how you get out of that last spot if everything is full. And personally, I don't, if the garage parking is assigned parking, and you can't get in there without a key card, you're going to have a spot to pull into, so I don't know why we need to take one of those spaces and negate it for no, no benefit in my mind.
So, Gary, does that extra striped spot solve your question? I don't think it did.
So it does, to me, it makes it easier to back out and turn around from that last spot, because it gives you a little bit of width to go around. I, I realize that we're sensitive on parking and that we don't want to eliminate spots unnecessarily, but I've been in a lot of, Logan Airport, I've been in a lot of parking lots, and you get that last spot against the wall, even with my car, which is not the biggest of cars, it's really, really hard to back out. So for me, I like having that buffer zone. You know, I, I don't know if there's an opportunity to leverage that either for a walkway or elevator access, or even for disabled parking, you know, there, there might be some other way to utilize that buffer zone and just pull those last spots away from that wall, because I think that that substantially improves the ability to get in and out of that last spot.
Just one other thing on that last spot in the garage, Louis LaBelle Architect.
Sorry.
Sir, you just have to come forward, folks at home can't hear you if you speak from the...
Louis LaBelle Architect, the last spots also, just for the record, are ten feet wide instead of nine feet wide to account for the fact that they're against the wall. That helps to some extent, and obviously, we can always include an additional striped-off spot if that's, that's what it comes to.
I guess I have a question too. As far as transferring over to commercial space, I'm a little concerned about what does that mean, because it's a non-defined space right now. Do you have any idea what the tenants will be? I'm just saying that because if it's an increased amount of traffic going in and out of there, is there a potential that that could be a traffic snafu?
So relative to the, the traffic model, the numbers were run based on a retail use, which has a higher usage than, than office, which is why we did that. So within that, there's different, then, the different bands of retail uses, it's generally still the same.
Can you point me to the page that, that that is stated on? I'm sorry, there's a lot of material. Can you point me to the study where, what page that study is on?
The traffic study?
Yeah, the newly revised one for the retail.
If you look at the zoning analysis table on page four of the site plan, that will give you the breakdown of the square footage and the parking per that, and then you can look at the traffic. Does that have it as well? Do you have, do you have a hard copy?
Table sixteen.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thanks. It's on the table one and two. Bracing down by general retail restaurant.
And how did that change? How did, how did that change from when it was off?
The twenty-five-hundred square feet of office went away, and twenty-five-hundred square feet of general retail were added to retail.
I thought in the package materials it also said some residential on the first floor, first level. No? Okay.
And then there are updated numbers, you see in that, that includes the outdoor patio seating as well.
Where, where is the outdoor patio seating?
So the patio is located right, right here.
Oh, but that's for the restaurant?
Yes.
Not for the residence? There's no outdoor barbecue spot, or, or no place for them to park their bikes? Is there a place to park bikes?
Yes, there's bike racks in the garage as well as...
In the garage.
Being in the garage and outside.
But there's no place for them to sit and have a picnic or any, no, no, every day?
Nope.
Okay.
Deb, you all set with that?
I'm all set, I'm just looking at the numbers.
Direct comparison to what was in the original study versus that one was in table two?
Ah, yes, thank you.
It adds up all the number, the total of that one is in that one.
Thanks.
I believe it's about one trip every six minutes or so.
So who is, who is in charge of the unusual snow event that will necessarily happen?
I am, I'm in charge.
Okay. So what, what's the backup plan?
I mean, it's like, it's like, you know, the other buildings I own. Obviously, if we have a huge snowstorm, you know, we make sure that we always have plenty of parking spaces. So the protocol is if we've got a pretty big snow event, we'll have it removed at night by the time, you know, the morning comes around. So basically, it comes down to how much snow we get.
But we will truck it off-site if required. And that's, that was stated in our one-lumber street conditions and, as well, we would expect something similar.
And we'll all have Paul's cell phone number.
You all, you all come to one-ten Grill, or you come to the complex, and I think there's plenty of parking there.
Well, that's what you do at that complex, right? You truck it off.
We do that, if there's any extra. I mean, right now, there's a tenant across the street that may park sometime in my lot, but I don't remember what that name of the company is, so.
You know what? I live in America, I park wherever I want.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm just saying that. Walk us through pedestrian flow just more time.
So for pedestrian flow, there are fully compliant walks throughout the site, the sidewalk along the front, comes to here, so also have walking around the back, both connect to the street. Everything is fully ADA compliant with slopes and connection limits.
I have one more, I, sir, if I'm looking at the tables, I have a question for you. If you could tell me a little bit, because retail is sort of, it can encompass a lot of different types of shops and lots of different kinds of uses. How does, how do you, how does the, how are those numbers derived? Because they've decreased considerably.
From?
From, from, yeah, from table two to table one. Yeah, from office. So, so how, how is that derived? How, how does one derive a retail use?
These are the retail uses here, the industry standards, so they go count shopping centers across the United States and Canada. And they probably bake for a square foot for general retail uses. So those are summarized here, and then you add in the restaurant, residential, and these are your total. So these are your, your total of that column here, as you had before, so it actually, it does go bottom by fourteen.
It goes, what goes up?
The current plan versus the original plan, plus fourteen.
So this is the difference is, oh, so it goes up plus fourteen?
Correct, so it goes up.
Where even though entering is only six and here it's twenty, so even, it's plus three, it turns out to be plus three. So wait, this is, this is the new one?
These are the new ones, you add the retail, the restaurant, and the residential.
I think we can only go with the industry standards for calculation.
Right, right.
This is total trip column is the same as the total, forty-seven is forty-seven. This is the total previously, which was office, retail. which was office, retail, restaurant, residential.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure it out. Thank you. Thanks. I'm just trying to kind of wrap my head around a little bit. Sorry.
So you have the original study. That's the original total. So you have office, retail. Your retail before is producing seven. We're now producing nine.
Is there ever a breakdown between what that retail is? Like if it's a bank, if it's a, you know, if it's a woman's shop, if it's a little grocery store? Is there ever a finite breakdown in standards?
If it's a supermarket, you would use a supermarket rate instead of a general retail. You could have like a bank.
If it's a coffee shop.
Other retail. A coffee shop, we would probably run like a coffee shop restaurant.
So these could change. These retail numbers could change.
So for the restaurant, we use the restaurant standard.
Can I jump in?
Yes.
My understanding is that retail encompasses a lot of variables and we can't, we can't actually know to the detail of the calculation.
No, true. But what I'm saying, what he's saying, is he's saying that depending on the retail, that there are those numbers as well. And so there is this general overall...
We don't know what that is. So we use the industry standard for retail is what we got.
So industry standard for come up with trips? Or we know there's a restaurant in there, so we use the restaurant.
I totally understand. I got it.
At this stage, I totally understand, too.
I'm following it.
Somewhere high and somewhere low, you put them all together, it's a general.
Yeah, it's an industry standard for calculation before you know. Okay.
I just had one question. I don't know if you're going around the horn here, but I just wanted to kind of maybe get Beta's comment, Phil, on your, on the flow, right? There's a lot of questions back and forth on the flow, going in and out, the width. Is it compliant? I mean, did you guys look at what Bowler did?
Yeah. So as the engineer mentioned, the parking spaces are standard size. And I've designed many shopping supermarkets where you get carts and everything else and like that. So the width of the aisle is standard 24 foot wide. It's actually wider than many of your roads. And then, yeah, and then there's, so and I think the added driveway for the garage makes it a much, people are going to use that area to turn around, not the little stripe there on the end.
The farthest one down.
So, yeah. So if they get there, now, now, mind you, you've added 30...
33% more.
Yeah, 30 more spaces. So it's less likely that all of them are going to be full unless you've got a, you know, super, super awesome restaurant there that's got a waiting line at the door.
I mean, I'm probably more concerned than you are as far as the parking. So, I mean, again, I'm cognizant about that every single day. And I would not put a restaurant in here if I didn't think that it could handle it. I mean, we're getting, you know, we're trying to get the approvals for 60 seats. Before we had the last meeting, you know, I was like, there's no way we're having a restaurant in this place. So, and that's why when I said, can we do something with the underground parking? How many spaces can we get? Because the last thing I want to do, the last thing my tenants want to do, if there's not enough parking, I'm not going to have tenants and I'm not going to have customers. So I'm probably more concerned than you are.
But do you have, is it...
Go ahead.
Through the chair. Is it, is, do you have any kind of concept of what's going in that commercial space?
I don't. I don't. I mean, we're gonna, I'm hoping that we get a bank. We need another bank in town.
Dry cleaner?
We need, I was thinking not a dry cleaner.
Fresh.
Maybe another pizza place. But...
Keep this Mastroianni trip inside your job.
Again, I'm very aware. So when you say, what's my concept? The concept that'll be, you know, bring a lot to the plaza that won't have too much parking, you know, that won't give me a problem. That's, you know, so with the extra 30 spaces, I think we've addressed a lot of that.
Okay, that's appreciated. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Yeah. Carol, are you also?
I am. I'm going to come around.
I did want to go around. We had Beta up here. I just wanted to take advantage of while Beta was up here, if we could ask him some questions.
Absolutely. Go ahead.
So Phil, we keep saying the word turn around. I just don't think that's a good thing for a commercial site, turnaround. You don't have turnarounds at a supermarket or anything else like that. Do you feel comfortable that cars will be reaching the end and have to turn around? Do you think that's a good experience for traffic?
Well, I, again, if, the only reason they would be turning around is if they've gone through the whole parking lot and there's no space to park. And by the time you get there, I mean, his business is going to be fairly booming to get there and there's no parking spots. Because you're going to pull in to the closest one or, you know, I don't know if the, you know, if your business is on the end of the building, you're going to go down to that, closer to that door and pull in. When you back out again, you're going to back out to move out. So it's, it may be occasionally that happens, but I don't, unless, you know, unless he's got a, you know, I mean, I think the Starbucks issue is a completely different issue because people are camped out there a lot during the day. I don't know.
Once again, we shouldn't, through the chair, we shouldn't do comparisons, but Starbucks does have a loop around it. It does have a flow. You do not have to back up at Starbucks.
But it's also got more than one entrance. So people coming in different ways. This has got one way in, one way out.
That's my big concern through the chair is that it's one way in, one way out. That's the biggest concern I have, that there's not a second outlet. And to be honest with you, I know there was pushback and I'd like to ask Elaine, but why can't there be access on the Police Department Road? Should we ask, has anybody talked to them? I mean...
I don't know if they have or not.
You responded to that one, too. Do you want to speak to it?
Yeah, we did take your comment seriously and we went back and looked at it again. The site has a slope to it. The building on the high side of the site, we had to slope down as we can while still keeping stalls that make sense. You don't want to just leave the doors fly open and all of that. So we kept the building on the high side and we sloped down as fast as we could and still get the comfortable grade. That still results in about a four, four to five foot grade difference from the corner here to the roadway elevation. We've actually got a wall that starts where my finger is and loops all the way around to here based on my grade difference. So I think from a topographical standpoint, there's not really the ability to do that without...
Okay. I was not aware of that, so thank you for pointing that out.
Yeah, it's really a great issue, but we do.
I mean, I understand the site and I'm not questioning the parking at all. I'm just trying to think of the user experience with the traffic flow and...
Can I ask a question about that on that same point? You have a ramp going down to basement parking. What's the difference in grade there?
I'm not sure I fully followed the question, but...
Well, I guess, I guess you're saying that there's a five to six foot difference between the grade on adjoining property in the parking lot.
Yeah.
But it seems like you've got a ramp going down, so there's going to be at least an eight or nine foot difference in grade when you go underground parking. So I don't, I guess I'm not quite following the rationale that you can't deal with that change in elevation?
So the way, the way we've dealt with it in the garage, you've got a pretty significant throat in that area. So essentially, starting from here, here.
Okay.
And along, outside of the building, within that area. You just don't have the room in the parking lot to be able to do that without essentially dropping...
Got it. Okay. That's helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hold on one second. We're going to come around the table and we'll come back.
I'm good. Thank you.
I think I'm good. I just want to point out that there are a lot of members of the public that might also have comments on the parking changes.
Yeah, I am. I'm getting there.
So, yeah.
We're just talking parking, right?
Just talking parking, traffic flow. I did want to ask the fire chief to, to tell us how comfortable, I assume that you have looked at this plan, and how comfortable you are with the backing, the K-turn situation.
Then I would only have one other point.
Okay. Thank you, chief.
Good evening. I haven't seen the sweat path analysis. I did talk to Paul and asked to see that move. So from looking at the TV, I just, it looks like it's a little snug in some of the clearances. So I would just go through that with the architect at some point to confirm that it meets the clearances. I think just from a code standpoint, our, our fire engineer would just, I'm drawing a blank on 527, whether it actually allows for the utilization of where oncoming traffic might be. So when you get into the corner of the parking lot, you're showing a sweat path, if there's a car there or not. So you might even know that off the cuff better than me. But there's a little bit on whether you can use oncoming traffic or not. I mean, this one has to be code compliant, unlike some of the scenarios we do with driveway conversations. That's kind of a different platform. So here, they have to meet 527. And 527 calls out that the sweat path can't go into oncoming vehicles, then he's going to have to demonstrate this room to get by that.
Okay.
So I just, usually I'll just go through that with them in a side meeting. I haven't done that yet.
Okay. So that does need to happen. Did you have a follow-up question?
One quick...
Hold on. Hold on. We're not leaving.
My follow-up question had to do with the crosswalk across, across Main Street that we talked about last time. So not for the fire chief.
Okay.
Just one quick comment. Thank you. Steve, I'll just ask you, when you do the sweat path analysis, please consider that corner because if there's two, there are two parking, the corner, upper left corner, because if there's cars parked in those two spots on each side, it looks kind of tight. That's all I wanted to say.
Yeah. So obviously, my first choice would be able to not back. From a code compliance standpoint, I think if they demonstrate that they can turn around, I think that complies. So in the conversation, if we have the ability to drive around, I did say that to Paul, you know, in the, my ideal scenario is most of the parking lots that we deal with, you're able to drive around and I don't have to back. The activity in a business is more than I face in a private driveway. So trying to monitor somebody pulling in behind you on a large piece of equipment, especially in our emergency conditions, can get a little hairy. So if that's your only way to reposition is backing off, you know, is the challenge of that site. So code compliance wise, though, I think this would be an option. Again, we haven't gotten to that point yet, how that's marked or not.
Okay, thank you. It's certainly got good proximity to the fire department.
To the chair, I have one question for the fire chief. Sorry, this is just for my edification. So when you have somebody to rescue in the parking garage, do you ever pull into the parking garage?
No.
Or do you pretty much answer from outside?
Yep. It's low ceilings. Our equipment doesn't fit. We have to practice for advancing. And it's a challenge, but again, it'll meet code. The architect has to design it so that it is code compliant. It'll have special fire protection. It is a challenge for us, but it's not like something I say yes and no to.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ask one more.
Sorry. I have one last question.
Okay.
I just wanted to know, do you have any concerns with not being able to go all the way around the building if there's a fire? Or anything that you'd be able to adequately address that issue?
I think it's probably the same comments, not to frustrate you. In a perfect world, I can go all the way around a building. There are a lot of examples in code compliance is, he's going to have a measurement of it can't exceed 250 feet in a square foot building that I can get a hose line to.
Yeah.
So that's how they get around these tighter sites and we have buildings like that. So...
Yeah. Okay.
I have one more question.
Oh, yes. Go ahead.
Sorry. On hydrant locations, just, I don't know if you've reviewed the plans or not, but one of the hydrants is back where the proposed snow accumulation area is in that bottom corner, in the northeast corner.
Bottom left?
Yeah.
So we generally talk about hydrants and...
Sorry, northwest. Sorry.
We generally talk about hydrants. They're going to make sure I have a hydrant in the back in a place that's accessible for us to use. So I just don't know where they have it located.
Okay. And I guess my concern is that the hydrant is also in the same place where the, the snow storage is, which just, again, looks problematic to me. I don't know if I'd want a hydrant buried.
Normally, at this point, I'll even let, probably, normally Paul would probably respond back. Because if we find out that this would be a better location because of that, that's normally a really easy ask for me. So, yeah, I see what you're saying. We hadn't really, he just had already assured me I'd have one towards the rear of the property. So I didn't have to bring a hose line all the way in and limit my access once I get in there.
We're giving more than code asked. So if he wants three, wants four, wants five, you know, as many as he wants.
Fire chief gets whatever he wants. I like it.
Do I have to say yes here?
Yeah, done. Okay. So just one more follow-up from Gary's question that I didn't really hear an answer is, what is the slope of the access to the parking garage?
Slope.
Just not the throat, just the slope from the drive?
The slope is 8% at the exterior. And then once you get the inside, it's a parking garage. So we go to 16%. And there's a transition area back down to 8%. And then back down to 2% slope across the parking area.
So 8% with how many feet?
That is 1 in 12. So it slopes down one foot in every 12 feet, like a handy...
So it's not completely, it's not completely subterranean, then?
No. So what happens is the...
Yeah, maybe in the elevation. Do you have the rear elevation?
I have the rear elevation. The access to the parking garage is here. So we sloped down about two feet essentially above outside. And then the rest of the slope takes up a considerable portion of the building. So in addition to the cost of the parking, you're losing, you know, some prime tenant space to access the parking garage.
All right. Thank you.
I had one, one last question. And I apologize if I already asked it. How do you control for deliveries only coming at off-peak times?
I don't think I have any conclusion.
That's what, that's what the discussion was for safety, was off-peak deliveries. Right? I didn't misread that, right?
No, that we would try to do it off-peak. So similar to what we have now with our tenants, there are kind of agreed upon preferred times with the tenants of when deliveries are allowed.
Well, what it said was that you would restrict the size of the delivery trucks and limit deliveries to off-peak times. You didn't say try in that sentence. You said you would restrict it when I read it.
So we will have an agreement in place formally. We have an informal agreement now with our tenants as to when deliveries are allowed in order to facilitate the flow with the current properties. So we had, we had talked about doing something similar with the tenants that go into that space. So the only tenant I think we're concerned about would be the potential restaurant with the deliveries. The rest of it being retail would most likely be more of the FedEx truck or the UPS delivery or the smaller scale than the box truck. So...
Or not necessarily smaller scale, right? A UPS truck could be pretty big. I don't know.
I mean, we wouldn't be able to police that. I mean, that would be pretty impossible to do that. But typically, delivery trucks...
That was my, that's my question, Paul, right there.
Well, it's the same thing. Again, almost in any site, any commercial site, I mean, pretty much they come when there are not a lot of cars there. So they're going to come 6:30, 7:00, 7:30 in the morning. They're going to try to come before there's, you know, a lot more cars in the parking lot. But if, you know, if there's a delivery at 10 o'clock, you know, again, I think it's kind of unrealistic to say they can only deliver between, you know, 6:00 and 8:00. It's, it's not going to happen.
Right. So I think that, I think that it's necessarily hard to factor for. And that particular location is really challenging from an emergency standpoint and particularly at, let's just say, school traffic times. So a really hard time going through that spot is 3:30, 4:00 in the afternoon. I just, I guess I leave that question open, right? That...
Well, challenging how? You're saying a lot of traffic at 3:00 in the afternoon?
Yeah. Yeah. And it's, the fire station is right across the street. I mean, there's, there are, there are things to think about for sure. The police station is right next door. We'll know who to call. Did you have a question?
One, one more thing. I just wanted to know, in your experimentation, when, where you placed the facility, did you try, did you try to do a loop around the building? Did you experiment with that and it just wasn't successful?
There was not enough width of the lot to do it around that.
To do a full circle?
Correct.
Okay.
Let me ask you this. Would you be, would you be amenable to a condition on regular deliveries? You know, your predictable deliveries?
Again, I mean, we can talk about that, but I, again, it's not, I don't know who's going to police it. You're going to...
Well, that is the question because you represented in your documents that you would restrict it. So I'm asking you how?
Well, I guess it will be amenable to saying they can only do deliveries from, you know, whatever times we come up with, but...
Okay. Let's, let's at least talk about that, okay?
I think we would just want to narrow down the types of deliveries. Obviously, UPS, FedEx, where, you know, a lot of that is not within our control. But if we have a restaurant with food deliveries and supply deliveries, that's a little bit more in the control of the tenant and we're...
Okay. So I'm just going to label that a fair question and we'll figure that out. Okay. I'm going to go ahead and ask, I think that this is going to be sort of the, one of the bigger topics. So I'm going to ask for public's input on this if we can make bigger topics, so I'm going to ask for public's input on this, if we can make some space.
So if I can, yep? I, I just wanted to suggest that you clarify exactly what you want public comment on right now?
Yes, for, for, yes.
Their benefit, just specify.
So the topics at hand are vehicular and pedestrian traffic flow, truck traffic flow, emergency vehicle access, the parking lot layout, dumpster location, which we have not asked and talked about, but maybe we're all set, snow storage and snow removal. Those are the, those are the major topics at hand for public input at this, at this time. And you do have to, just process-wise, you have to come forward, I do have to ask you guys to make space, because they need to be able to, that's okay. You have to introduce yourself and your address, and try and keep your comments as succinct as possible. Yes?
Yes, hi, I'm Sean McGinnis, and I live at 8 Summer Street. And I'm one of the three immediate abutters. We, I'm one of the persons that parallels where the building is being built. And I'm sorry I wasn't at the last meeting. I did distribute notes, but I'm not so sure that anybody even got my notes. But I understand that the topic right now is parking vehicular and pedestrian, et cetera.
Yeah.
So I have to say, I honestly don't mind looking at parking. I don't mind the amount of parking spaces that they have. I'd actually rather be looking at parking than at the building. I'm very concerned about the loop road and the lack of a fire access. I realize it's to code, and with a sprinkled building, you do have a lot of leeway with fire access. But I agree with, with the concern about the fire access, because if that building is truly only 10 feet off the property line, which in the, in the last set of drawings, it looked like it was only 10 feet off the property line, unless that, well, and per the building code, that does need to be a fire-rated exterior wall if it's within 10 feet of the property line. So again, I'm very concerned with the proximity of it to the property line, and the fact that there's no loop road for fires, fires to be fought.
Yep, yep.
I'm curious, I know this is, might be off-topic, I'm curious if he looked at mirroring that whole site, so that we were looking at the parking rather than at the backside of the building? Because honestly, my neighbors, who are right up front, they've got balconies staring right into their, right into their bedrooms. And if the whole project...
Okay, so that would definitely be off-topic, but we will, there will be a time for that.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Okay, okay. And, you know, I'm all for progress, and I'm all for building commercial, retail downtown. I know I want to prevent this project from happening, but I do think that there's some opportunity to make the project better, and, and it would be acceptable to myself and my neighbors. That's an awfully big building that is towering over us. If it were flipped, you would have fire access from the police station side, that police station access road would be your fire access. I understand it's a five-foot drop. There's a lot you can do with, with grading and contours. This is going to be a substantially priced project, so a little bit of additional grading and regrading is not going to affect the budget that considerably. That would give you your fire truck access, you won't need to fire rate that exterior wall, we won't have a big building towering over us. There's, there's a lot of reason I would like to see it mirrored, or at least attempted to mirror it. We then won't have to listen to the air conditioners running all the time, the exhaust, kitchen exhaust fans are very loud, we wouldn't have to listen to that.
Okay.
So off-topic, I'm sorry.
I know, I know. But I, I definitely understand how you get to it from this topic, but what I really recommend to people who have, and you said you had written comments. Did we get them in our packet?
Two weeks ago, you would have gotten them. I was out of town two weeks ago.
All right, perfect.
Well, you would have gotten them about two and a half weeks ago.
Yeah, that's what I recommend, though, is if you have a specific detailing of concerns, and I will commit to going back and rereading that if you submitted that. You always submit in writing if you are comfortable with that, because it is a little bit easier for us to go back and forth.
Yes, it was in writing, April 5th. Perfect. If you can't find it, I can reset. I sent it to Shannon.
I'm, I'm sure we, we got it. I'm sure, I'm sure. I was, I was mostly asleep last time.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm always speaking for myself, I just recorded what you said. Yeah, I'm always speaking for myself. I have been working around the clock, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I think it was printed out at our last meeting.
It was printed for us at the meeting?
Okay. So I don't think it was in the packet.
Perfect, thank you. I will, yes.
Hi. Hi, how are you? Good. India Nolan, 26 Chamberlain Street. So as we've been talking about backing up, and, you know, how we're going to have this and the other thing, I'm thinking to myself, I'm really, you know, for the amount of retail and shopping and everything that I do and have done, and being a librarian, and having, you know, worked where there's like no parking, it seems to me that we're kind of not being realistic when we're talking about one vehicle coming in and needing to back up and come out again. And all the cars are going to be in their places, waiting for this to happen. You know, in the, you go to any place, and you've got cars coming in, cars pulling out, how, you know, there's going to be more, you know, you have a garbage truck coming in, or you have, you know, and if there is, God forbid, an emergency, you know, everyone's going to try and get out, and there you've got one place for your emergency vehicle. So I've just never been in a parking lot where it's like only one thing is happening, you know? This, to me, is like, you know, you've, what if there's two trucks? What if there are...
So India, India, just speaking for myself, I'm not assuming that there's only one car coming in or out.
No, I, I'm not thinking, you're, you're assuming that. I'm thinking that that's the way that they are presenting it, is as if there's only one truck going to be in, then they can back out. Meanwhile, all the cars are, you know, it, it doesn't make, it, there's a lot of density here, and I'm not even talking about, you know, all of the conversations on Hopkinton on common about what's going to happen when they, you know, now we have 90 spaces, and we're thinking, that's great? I'm thinking, this is a nightmare for Main Street. I'm, you know, I'm, the density of this, and where it's located, and the fact that we're losing a historical, you know, the second oldest, I mean, the whole thing is very upsetting.
Yeah, it is very, it is, okay. It is definitely parking that we're talking about, and we definitely have all the other features on the agenda.
Okay, so the parking for me is problematic, because I don't think it's, we're talking, we're focusing enough on the fact that many things will probably be happening at the same time, not just one truck needing to back up, maybe three or four vehicles needing to back up, having to line up, then can people pull out of their, back out of their own parking lots? This, to me, is reality.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Palmer, welcome.
John Palmer, 87 Main Street. I have two questions. One's a general question, and about traffic-related, one's a general question, one's specific. The general question is, has there been any input to the planning board by either the police department or the fire department as to the potential impact of a fire or police emergency during the day with the added traffic that may be going in and out of this development? That was my question. Has there been, have they had, have they made any, any input to the...
So the standard, the standard process is to, is to gather, you send out an invitation for feedback from departments. So I can tell you that we have not heard that that's a problematic situation. I don't know that that specific question has been asked. But we do seek the input of all town departments.
And the specific question I had, and I raised this last time, where, where is the crosswalk to Main Street? This is the, the existing crosswalk is right here. This is the, the fire station here, and this is the walkway to the senior, the senior station. The plan was to put it up here, and I had a problem with that. Has that been resolved, that?
No.
Sorry.
No, but...
I'd like to restate with my followers. This is a pretty good place to pass, I'd cross here. This pla, this area here to cross is, there's a decent-sized slope coming from the west, and cars coming down there may not give the pass, the pedestrians enough time to jump across. They won't see the cars in time, and they'll get caught out there, whereas here, you've got more time to tell if there's a car coming at you.
Yeah.
And you can wait, so I want that taken into consideration.
So I am taking a note about that, John. It is a specific agenda item in the future.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, but thank you. Anybody else on the parking, parking flow? Yes.
Only at 36 Station.
Eliot, what?
My name is John Gardner, and I'm Sean's neighbor at 4 Summer Street, and no one knows more about this piece of land than I do, because they have a perfect view out my back window. It's going to be hard for me to restrain just the parking and related, there's a lot of other stuff.
What's your address, John?
4 Summer Street.
4 Summer Street, okay.
Yes. My first question about the proposed underground parking would be, does it do anything to the height of the building there? It's already, is it maximum, as I understand it?
It can't change.
So they've got to dig deep in order to do that. I would suggest there's a potentially, and this is whether they dig it, trench or not, the water flow in that area, that whole piece of land, goes from, goes across to the northeast corner.
Yeah.
And I believe there's a catch basin or something showing here, that all the water goes there. I challenge anybody after the meeting to come to my house and watch it rain, and watch all the water from Summer Street, which comes down my driveway, goes across my backyard.
We are definitely going to talk about that at a separate time, but...
Okay, but I would question, does making additional parking under the building become even a bigger nightmare now of flooding of any...
So just show us, just show us where the, the flow of water is, as you can see it.
To what?
The flow of water, you say, if there's a big rain event.
It's centered down from Main Street, actually. The water comes, I have my house here, the water comes, it starts in Paul Fipps's land.
Yep.
Of course, the whole piece goes down towards this corner.
Yep.
Comes down my driveway, comes down Sean's driveway, I've got a beginning of a Grand Canyon here where it comes off the road. Most of it is road water, it is melting, the flow is down, Summer Street's here, the flow of water is down this way.
Okay.
The river's down, but if everything's targeting here, if you look at this terrain, one of the houses for the, House Authority is right here, unless there's some giant pipe that would take it away from the land, I think this is a major problem.
For the parking flow and the parking, okay, okay, fair enough. So a little illustration of how all the issues are all tied together. Okay.
So I have that as a comment. In terms of the traffic, I would just, several of you folks were pushing on the agenda. It's really important to at least consider worst-case scenario, if this is the location of the new pot shop in Hopkinton, there's going to be tremendous impact. But what, what is there commercially is of tremendous significance in terms of an acceptable plan for parking. I, I walked in tonight to a new plan, the under-building parking. Before that was an issue, there was, it was, by my calculation, using their numbers, there were going to need to be 30 slots on the Main Street to accommodate at peak time the cars that would be there. So it changes some certainly by doing onsite underground parking.
Yeah.
But I would caution, if you've got a 60-seat restaurant, that, you get flow all at once, and you get the change of flow, you get people, the restaurant's busy on a Saturday night, you've got a flow to manage outside. I would argue that even with the additional slots, there's still the potential of needing far more parking spots. And you said earlier, people want to park where they want to park, so the focus is, the heat's going to be on those parking places around, there are precious few along the Main Street.
Yeah.
And I could just leave the open question, where do all these cars go? If the business is, is as successful as the owner would hope, then I think that increases the level of problem.
Right, right.
And that's a major, major factor.
I, right.
I'll, I'll try to stop there. I would just editorialize that I think what you're wrestling with is a problem, you've got, you've got a size 10 building on the size five lot, and I think the struggle's going to be, there's an awful lot to, to accommodate, much of it mixed, mixed purpose. And I think, I think as proposed, it's a nightmare, and has the potential to be a nightmare long after it's built, so.
Thank you so much.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Peter Hilberg. I live at 78 Main Street, and I obviously have lots of things to say, but I will save that when it's more appropriate. Regarding this particular topic, two things. One, I certainly concur with John Palmer. Living on Main Street and being outside at times, I see motorists do a lot of stupid things when ambulance and fire trucks are trying to get in and out of the firehouse. Having all these cars here will only add to the chaos of what's happening when we're trying to move emergency vehicles, not necessarily onto the property, but just out of the firehouse onto Main Street. And as an emergency physician who works at Metro West Medical Center, that's a concern for the health and welfare of the town, when minutes and even seconds make a difference. And to think that some accident would happen out in front of the firehouse, just when an ambulance is trying to move out, it would really impede the flow of the, any kind of emergency vehicle. Secondly, regard to this parking, I'm just looking at some of the numbers here, and I'm curious how the appropriate parking numbers have come up. First of all, does the 9646 retail space, four spaces per thousand square foot, does that include just the customers of the retail space, or does that include the employees of the retail space as well?
So I don't know the answer to that, but I assume that it's in there, but we can ask that question.
The other thing is, with regards to the restaurant, one space for two employees. I doubt that you'll have husband and wife working at the restaurant, I doubt that you'll have people carpooling, everybody has their own car, they all drive to the place where they work, so I can't imagine how one space for two employees is accurate.
I assume part of that is that they're not all working at the same time.
And then, as far as the one-bedroom apartments, one space per bedroom. The builder has said that he's trying to do this for older couples. Even if you're an older couple, typically, if you're living in one bedroom and it's two people, you're going to have two cars. Even if you're a young couple trying to save money, and it's a couple together in one bedroom, you'll have two cars. So I, I think that's, everybody said that the parking is crowded. I think that based upon the calculations, they may not be totally accurate, and it's going to be even more crowded than what we anticipate. That's all I have to say for now.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else from the public on this particular issue?
So I think I covered everything almost, but I'm just going to, the downtown quarter is supposed to be putting a set of traffic lights that's going to assist the public safety buildings, so I don't know what the final engineering would like, or how it solves for it, but I certainly hope that they incorporate existing and new and whatever flow may be, so just, that's something in this hearing, you hear that, that it is slated to assist us with some of this traffic control. So hopefully, if this comes to fruition, they will look at this driveway like it will look at our neighbor and some of the others.
Yeah.
Just a comment, and if we can influence that, I'm going to try to influence that from my side.
Well, I was, I was going to ask you, I mean, have you been promised some sort of improvement? Because when I, I mean, I only looked at the data a little bit, it looked like it took a very lousy intersection to slightly less lousy. So I, I mean, does...
It's the traffic control light that they've promised so far. The traffic control light that they've promised so far.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Solution that's solved the problem.
Yes, so you will be able to control the traffic light?
Exactly.
I got, thank you. Okay, that makes sense to me.
Yeah, so that we can make sure that it kind of looks at this area, because, you know, right, the testimony is true, it's downtown is challenging, so I hope they may take this project in with whatever it may base here, so.
Do you have the timeframe on that?
Next, I think it's a year from now they're projecting.
I think it's summer twenty twenty.
Who they're projecting to state?
They'll be going out to bid, so.
It's on the stated for twenty-twenty.
I'm sorry, it's slated for going to bid in twenty-twenty?
It's on the state improvement plan money for twenty-twenty.
Yes, for twenty-twenty. So start to, so going out to bid and initiating in twenty-twenty?
Correct.
Okay.
And just maybe a couple of the public comments that I can, the impact to Main Street, if I have an emergency on Main Street, just many of the buildings are challenging and I would just shut down Main Street. So I kind of always let everybody know that if I'm in that situation.
Yeah.
And it inconveniences people, but that's the action I do and I have to do that in several areas. Like, I was at a building this week and I shut down Main Street while I figured out whether I had a fire or not.
Okay.
It's just, that's the way I have to deal with that issue.
Okay.
It's not the perfect scenario, but it's, I do have to face that quite often and that's what the solution is.
Okay.
And then just kind of a follow-up on the parking, I think I presented you a fair statement on sweat path analysis, but just a little more, there's a drawing here, it's been presented and I would just bet it further, I have not seen a normal solution. So that's kind of, that has to take place in code compliance.
Yep.
And I just want you to know, I haven't seen that it truly meets at all. I'll take the architect for his work and I would check on that oncoming traffic piece. So I think that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. We are nearing the nine o'clock bell, so we have a few more minutes, we can keep talking. But what is our schedule for the next meeting?
Seven thirty, we have continued hearings for Whisper Way. Definitely also in the neighborhood of Parkland. Eight forty-five, we have seats locating for Wilson Street and for access to Solar Farm. And nine o'clock, continued public hearing for Buckland Street.
Wow. Okay, seven thirty, we have what?
Seven thirty is Whisper Way.
Whisper Way. And then what's the next time? Just run that through really quickly, I'm sorry.
Seven thirty, continued public hearing for Whisper Way.
Yep.
And we gave them an hour and fifteen minutes.
Okay.
So eight forty-five, seats locating. Gave them fifteen minutes. And then at nine o'clock, continued public hearing for Buckland Street, for Wall Street Development.
Wow.
You think who we're gonna go, that's the question. You have to assume that they are at this point.
I'm just looking at this and just looking at the reality that we lose two board members following next meeting. Does anybody have willingness to try and meet for a slightly longer meeting? I will definitely end at ten, I promise, but to start earlier at seven or even six-thirty one time, one more time?
How much date are you?
It is, what's the date? May fifteenth?
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth, thank you, thirteen.
So how many meetings do we have before the board turns over to?
One, no, one more. This one and one more.
Yeah.
Not feeling like we could close this out and vote on it within another meeting?
Not necessarily the question, but thank you.
I'm available to meet on the thirteenth early.
I don't disagree with you, I'm just giving it a shot if it works. May thirteenth, are people willing to come at six-thirty?
I cannot.
You cannot? What time can you get here?
Seven at best.
Seven at best.
Six-thirty is very tight for me, too.
All right, that's fair. And we want to maintain people's ability to vote, so seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock.
Okay. Thank you.
Does that just give us a half hour or?
Well, it does give us a half an hour unless anything else either ends, pushes out, and, or continues or whatever. So it's about the best we can do at this rate with what we know.
I want to mention, remind that we have a sidewalk for this in between.
Oh, yes, thank you. And I am, this Saturday at eight?
Eight.
And I am sheepishly admitting that I am not going to be there.
I can't be there, so.
I'm sorry. You do? Who's going to be there? One, two, three, four. Okay. But I will commit to going out and, I mean, I know the spot, but I'll walk around it for sure. I apologize.
I will, too, I apologize as well. I'm gonna be out of town.
All right. Maybe I'll take Paul up on that cup of coffee, we'll walk, we'll walk aside. Okay, but there is a sidewalk at eight o'clock on this Saturday. The public is invited to attend. Sightwalks are not public hearings, so it's not the time, it's certainly the time to have conversations and potentially ask questions. It's not the time to contemplate that actual, any kind of decisions are being made or testimony is being taken. All of that has to happen in the context of a public hearing in this room.
Question for the chair. I hadn't considered this before, it was recommended tonight, but the mirroring, moving the building more to the east side of the lot, I think that deserves some consideration. And I know that they would need time to work up plans to do that if that's something we were interested in hearing. So if they did do something like that, it would be after the election anyway, so maybe that's a moot point, I'm just...
I don't know, it's worth saying that it's an interesting concept and it's up to them, the developer, to tee that up or not. But it is interesting because there's no, you know, there's no residents on that side of the parking lot and...
I don't, I was thinking from a historical standpoint, that's where the current historical building is and that would be good continuity, but it's something to think about.
The historical thing is a whole different can of worms.
Through the chair, related to the sidewalk.
Yes.
Can we ask the applicant, how many representatives will be there?
Yeah, who's gonna be there? Everybody?
Pretty much, I can imagine.
Okay.
Engineers.
Yeah.
Is there someone, is it that you're looking to?
No, no, I just wanted to make sure we have representation.
From past experience, it's quite a party out there.
Yes, it is.
But definitely I recommend people come, I think it's a different way of seeing it. It always helps me, I am sorry I'm not gonna be there, I am gonna make a point of going and tromping around and I may really ask somebody to just do that with me, because it really does make a difference to see exactly where you're situating something and contemplate the scale and, you know, think in a practical, a practical way about how it is going to look there. And also just, you know, you know, look out and see, you know, most of us drive through there all the time and understand the challenges, but to, you know, stand in space and watch the traffic, it'll still be an early Saturday morning, but to understand exactly where you are and what the, what the concerns are is helpful.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Since there was, I believe, four that cannot make it, could I suggest scheduling a second one the following Saturday? Casual one?
Or changing it?
Not changing it, because then you probably have the same situation.
So what is, I'm sorry, what is this Saturday's date?
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh. And the next Saturday would be what, May?
Fourth.
Fourth. I can go on the fourth, I don't know, I mean, we could, could somebody from your team meet me on the fourth, if other people could go on the fourth?
I mean...
You can go on the fourth?
I should be able to be there this Saturday, so I would be the fifth, but, I mean, it's a parking lot with existing businesses now, I mean, I, it seems like if people wanted to stop by at another point in time, they...
They definitely can.
They can. I mean, it's not like it's a access issue or a safety issue or something if people actually...
No, agreed.
There is concerns about the stormwater, though, so that would be important to point out. There's concerns about the stormwater, so that'd be important to get input from the neighbors.
So is anybody else wanting to join Mary and I on the fourth?
I can...
So if one person can walk, just be there to answer questions on the fourth, too, that's really helpful. Okay. Eight, is eight?
Yeah, that's fine.
Make a motion for that?
I don't think we do.
You don't need sidewalk, you don't need, okay, cool.
Well, so, we're just scheduling it. Oh, it has to be, it should be posted just in case.
Yeah.
Yeah, it should be posted just in case.
No, there's a meeting, but it's...
Just as a gathering of the planning board, yeah. We probably won't have a forum, but that's a good point to make sure it's posted. Thank you, yep.
That means no deliberations, no discussion, just observing.
Right, right.
Yes.
Right. No deliberations.
Is that the normal sidewalk criteria?
It is, it is. That is the normal, that's what's for sidewalk. It's always a challenge to maintain that, that scenario, but all deliberation and all discussion has to happen in the context of the meeting. So the hour being nine o'clock, I will entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to seven PM on May thirteenth. Second?
Discussion before we vote? Do we have other stuff at nine? Can we keep going on this or?
We have a lot of stuff.
All right.
Thank you. We have so much stuff. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, awesome, thank you. So on to that stuff.
Frank, you can sign another month or so.
What's that? Listen, and a sidewalk.
And a sidewalk.
All right.
They go to two sidewalks.
All righty, can we, can we do the executive session minutes first so we get that done?
I like that better, that's a really good idea.
Well, what's really, whoops, sorry, I didn't mean to do that, but...
So process-wise, you take a few minutes to read these and then just vote them?
So what you do is you get, what the nice thing about flipping is that you get the longer distance to make them. And so then you can use the loop.
Elaine, are you collecting these?
Yep.
Yeah, were you caught up with the town attorney as needed?
What's that? Yes, we met separately.
We met separately.
Smile, yeah, smile away. That's all he can do.
So all the copies have to go back to Elaine when you're done reading them?
I added it to my photographic memory.
Nice.
I think I remember the first...
We're not gonna be able to do it without your photographic memory, you're gonna have to stand on for another sentence, end of term. All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the executive session for Monday, April twenty-second, held at seven PM at the Town Hall, Room 211. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, careful? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We lost Mary. Any opposed, any abstentions?
Staying.
Sorry, Mary, I didn't know she wasn't here. All right.
I motion that the minutes be made public.
Huh?
I motion that the minutes be made public.
I was gonna ask what the process would be for that.
When the reason for them being executive session and confidential is gone, then you can release them, but until then, they're not to be released, so it's not ready for release.
So will Town Council notify us when, when the reason is?
Actually, we'll push that.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Do they typically, does Town Council typically notify us on those things? Does, do they typically notify us or do we just kind of keep it on a?
No.
We'll just ask, okay.
Thanks, Elaine.
Because I agree with Frank, I'd like them to be released as soon as they can be. So Mary, I'm sorry, I took the motion and the vote before looking to the left, but it was a successful enterprise.
That's fine, absolutely.
All right. I'll entertain a motion on the minutes of March twenty-fifth. I did suggest a correction in the detail on the TJ Solar. My comment on the conditions that were written for screening on somebody's property were about, directed to Mr. Shambo versus Ms. Hanowich, and that was swapped around, but I corrected, gave that correction to Kobe. Is there a motion on the minutes?
Move to approve?
As corrected?
As amended.
As corrected by Mary?
Or as amended, yep.
Chair.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? We have an approval-not-required plan we could probably do. So, there it is. Do we have Barry Smith? Not Barry Smith. Somebody in Barry Smith's place.
Thereabouts, yes. I'm Rich Leslie, I'm with Bay Colony Group, and we actually prepared this A and R plan for EverSource Energy in Barry Smith.
Okay.
So what this is, is this parcel is shown as parcel five on a plan that was done by J.D. Markedin in November of nineteen ninety-four. And Barry Smith is selling off, it was a fifty, a little over fifty-five acre parcel or is, and Barry Smith is selling off twenty-one point three acres to EverSource and retaining the rest of it. The parcel is, it's situated on Wilson Street, it's right between Wilson and Cedar, so it's on the east side of Wilson, I'm sorry, the west side of Wilson, east side of Cedar Street. There's a mill up there.
Yeah.
At twenty-nine.
Yeah.
And then on the backside, on Cedar Street, he has his landscaping business. The State Forest are north of it, so there's, there's the EverSource plant on the north, and then you have the Hopkinton State Forest, which also backs up to Cedar Street. And so, and what we're doing is just proposing to cut itself to twenty-one point three acres.
Question?
Thank you, through the chair, for clarification, this contains a private home and the business?
On this parcel, though, there were, there were five parcels back in nineteen ninety-four. One of them was twenty-seven, which was a residential, the other one's...
Twenty-seven Cedar or twenty-seven Wilson?
Twenty-seven Wilson, twenty-nine Cedars, the sawmill. And then on the, I'm sorry, twenty-nine Wilson is the sawmill. And then on the backside, I don't know the address off the top of my head, Cedar Street.
That's a different...
That's, the same guy owned all the land and broke it up, those five different parcels.
Because when you described it as end-to-end, I, that's...
Yeah, actually, yep.
It's up on the screen, actually. Yeah.
A question through the chair, what lot is in question here?
So, see what says five A and five B, all of that together, all of that five A, five B is just locked on the three pieces of the chain.
Okay.
So five A, twenty-one point three acres is being compared to EverSource, and five B remains to Barry Smith.
Okay.
Okay.
I see it now, I got it, yeah. Oh, I thought there was, all right, I thought there were two five Bs.
No, it's just part showing that it extends up on those buildings. Then as you can see, Barry Smith owns the land around him as well. We wouldn't be able to, we wouldn't be able to trust.
Through the chair, does that include the old quarry? Do you know?
No. No, our site is just a, it's a complete wood site.
Is the quarry on current EverSource property?
I'm not sure, that's why I was curious.
Do you know?
I didn't know there was a quarry there.
Oh. All right. Any other questions?
Just additional information, but does the Cedar Street lot, which I can't read exactly, is that where the other private home is or is that further?
No, no, the private home is, well, there is a house on Cedar Street lot as well, and our back, the house is where he does his landscaping.
Right, all right, okay. And then he's still keeping that?
Yes.
That's the wedge?
Yes. Yep, that's a wedge, it's a wedge realtor trust for Cedar Street.
Okay.
Just to the point of the quarry, the quarry's owned by LNG, the LNG plant.
It is.
Yeah, and the, just to not confuse it with Hopkinson Sand Pit, where they get the sand for them. Which is on the...
Just a question, there's nobody, there's no representative from LNG here, correct?
No. No, I'm working for them.
So do we, any idea what that additional land is gonna be used for?
I have no idea, I was given sketches to prepare a plan here.
Understood.
Did you have a question Carol? No. This one? No questions.
I guess my only question would be for our planning staff, if there's any additional input that we should consider.
I don't think so, no. It meets the requirements of the A&R.
It is. Alright, I'll entertain a motion to approve the A&R for Zero Wilson Street.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Yep.
Will we sign it? Bring it over.
Two?
Two, Carol, me and you?
Last official item.
That might be the last one.
Carol or Fran?
There we go. Good, done. Frankly, I'm gonna be glad to be rid of them. Oh, did I say that out loud? You guys are gonna have to come back, you're gonna be like Amaretta's. Is it 5:22? 4:22. Actually Fran's gonna be back there with his watch. Alright. So, I'm gonna try and kick off one more easy one. We need to pick a social date to post, to have dinner and drinks, or drinks or something, to say thank you to Fran and Carol. So, right, Fran has some dates for us to contemplate, and then Carol, I'll have to go second.
So, the week of the 13th, since it's our last meeting, if there's any days, the 14th, 15th, or 16th. I don't know if any of you are traveling Gary.
Do those work for you?
Maybe those work.
Those are fine. Okay. How about you Mary?
It looks like Thursday night. I'm busy. But Tuesday and Wednesday are fine that week.
Alright, how about you Gary?
Wednesday's best for me, but...
Okay.
I can make it anymore.
Wednesday's best for me, I have plans the other two.
Wednesday's best, oh, okay.
Yeah, I may have an issue with Tuesday, but...
But Wednesday works?
Yeah, Wednesday, Thursday.
This is kinda like doing the Secret Santa at the Cranger residence, are you gonna make it the whole way around the team?
I believe Tuesday's gonna be the best for me, but I might, I have to double check my flight, I might be able to...
Definitely double check.
I left my phone in the car, where should, but I'm thinking Wednesday would be best for me too.
Wednesday, okay. Wednesday looks to be the big winner day.
Okay, I'll double, sweaty palms, I'll figure it out. Let me double check.
What time? What time works?
I'm pretty flexible.
6:30, shall we do dinner? Sure, yeah. Alright, shall we do dinner at TJ's?
I won't be there.
You won't be there?
My son's graduation week.
Oh, your son's graduation.
I'll be in New Orleans though, so, but I'll thank you guys.
Alright, we'll miss you if I'm...
No, but maybe I'll get a rain shack, we could do this again.
We could do it again.
Are you guys trying to remember talking?
Oh, we're extending the invitation to the left.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Guys should come to the left.
Location?
Okay, Wednesday, the 15th, at 6:30. Shall we do TJ's, because they have a big space?
We can do that back room there.
Yeah, well, we can ask them if we can do the back room, but I got connections, so... Alright, TJ's, alright.
I can make it.
Yay!
2:40 Thursday, yes, I can make it, yeah.
15th.
Alright.
Just had a little bit longer space locked out. Alright, but I better write it in there.
I think it's gonna be true, I'm gonna change my plans if I have some plans on the 15th, because... I didn't think I did, but I'm going to check.
Do we know where we're doing it?
TJ's.
You'll be on a cruise? Yeah, I feel like that's where you're gonna be.
Exactly.
Yep, no, I am definitely free, thank goodness. So 6:30 PM, TJ's, will you post that for us? Has to be posted. It does, yeah, it does.
The public's welcome.
But I, yes, the public is welcome. And whether there'll be a small amount, now probably no talking of business. We'll do some minutes, they will be very cursory.
After or before drinks.
Okay, perfect. And definitely, everybody's welcome, staff is welcome, so... Okay, perfect, that was actually easier than I expected it to be.
Elaine, technically, if we're on the Hopkinsons' side of TJ's...
Doesn't matter where you're...
Yeah, that's right, that's right. It has to be an accessible building, check. It has to be posted. I know all the rules, okay?
It has a loop around drive.
By the way, this is a first for me, I've been in town politics for, you know, a minute.
Over 20 years.
And this is the first time I have posted a meeting at TJ's, just saying. Alright, I'm just putting it in my calendar, so I don't forget. And I will take the action item to call TJ's.
Let's see if we can get that farther down.
Yep, yep. Alright. Okay, look at that, easy peasy. So, can we, we talked about the citizens petition, the growth study situation. Somebody, we did not set a time to talk about it again. We just heard how busy the, oh, actually, we don't meet again before town meeting anyway.
No.
Right?
No.
Okay, so that particular...
We don't meet before town meeting? Oh, so...
Town meeting.
More meeting after?
Yeah, but in the election, right?
No, yeah.
This is a good time to also make sure we remind the public that annual town meeting comes up and begins at 7 o'clock on May 6th. At the middle school auditorium, it hasn't changed, okay. Middle school auditorium, 7 o'clock, May 6th. And the public is encouraged to attend. Alright, so...
What day is the election, sorry, since we're...
Yep, no, and the election is the 20th.
So Monday, not Monday?
Monday, yep. We have a meeting on the 13th, and the election is the following Monday, on the 20th, all day.
Thank you.
Vols are open 7 to 8, I think. Look at me go with my public service announcements. Okay, so, is there, we should set a time to talk about this at more length. Does it make sense, our next meeting is June 10th? Is that right? After May 13th? Yes.
Correct.
Alright. Okay, hey guys, let's test our commitment to this idea. Is there any enthusiasm for a meeting just to talk about structuring this and outlining some priorities and crafting a proposal? There is on my part, let me just say that, I think that...
If it's not gonna be a three hour meeting, right?
No, exactly, I mean...
Could it be a subcommittee where we wouldn't have to have a...
I am also amenable to a subcommittee, a subcommittee has to post, has to be in a public place that's accessible, and has to keep minutes. But open meeting law applies to subcommittees.
I'm supportive of having a separate meeting.
Separate meeting.
Yeah, I think that's the best way to do it. Me too. So we have enough time to discuss it.
Okay, so let's get on our little calendars again, everybody.
Here we go.
So...
Can we do it at TJ's on Wednesday?
But seriously. Anybody have any suggestions?
14th, that Tuesday?
14th, that's before Fran leaves.
Rope me in for one more. My only caution there is that means we have planning board activities Monday, Tuesday...
But some people said Tuesday didn't work, right?
Trails committee meeting.
Nice, awesome.
This is for a subcommittee, so not everybody...
No, well, we did, so we didn't decide to do a subcommittee necessarily.
Okay, it's a separate meeting.
Separate meeting.
I think it might be better to do after the election, so we can get the input of our new members too.
That is not terrible, um...
If we do it after the election, we can have our two new members also give input.
Then Fran can petition to be a citizen at large.
Come back in, full circle.
In case she misses us.
I love that idea, actually Fran and Carol.
Getting flashes.
Okay.
Well, could we do June 3rd, maybe?
June 3rd, what's on June 3rd, anybody?
State convention.
What?
Saturday is last year.
June 3rd is a Monday, right?
Yep. Zach meeting. Do you have Zach on every alternate Monday?
Our meeting's the 10th. How about, Wednesday worked, how about June 5th?
It's okay with me.
How about the following week?
That's after our next meeting, which is okay, June 12th?
Yeah, that'd be better for me.
It's okay for me.
Double meetings that week?
Works.
So that's, yeah, it's two planning board events. It's gonna be a good week.
Three meetings for me.
So we can't do it May 22nd?
Back to May 22nd. Oh, senior dinner.
Okay.
Sorry. Yep. I'll see you there.
Quorum, do you have a quorum?
Nope, I don't think so. The 21st, it's a Tuesday. Design review.
I'm on vacation.
27th is probably Memorial Day, right? Yep.
Yep.
28th.
So do we only have one planning board meeting?
How about the 29th? That's May.
That'd be good, because we don't have a planning board meeting that week, right? We only have one next month.
Right.
29th is a grade eight concert. Grade eight concert.
Okay.
That's just me, maybe.
What time is it?
7.
It's at 7.
They don't last very long, but, so I could come after.
So if we met at 8?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I might finish by 8:15 or something, yeah.
Or 8:30, I mean, if it's gonna be a one hour thing, 8:30 to 9:30? I want you to be there.
Yeah, but if I came a few minutes late?
It's okay.
I think so.
Right, so 8 o'clock on the 29th?
Might, may or may not be able to make that one.
You know, you're just new to us here and already causing problems. I think that that's fine, actually, I would appreciate your ability to be there if you can, but I don't think that it's critical if you're not able to be there. I appreciate knowing that, though.
In his defense, he just wrote 20 different dates, and that's the first one.
Well, I don't know, maybe he was being quiet, so just saved it till we settled on a date, so... Where, is there, is there an opportunity to know where we might meet in this building? Is the 29th at 8?
Are we talking April or May?
May. The seniors will be on their boat cruise, it doesn't involve us.
29th at 8? At the senior center?
What's open? Looks open?
Here.
Oh, anywhere, here? Oh, so we can meet here, awesome. Thank you. So, so May 29th, at 8 o'clock, in this room, to talk about structuring a multi-stakeholder growth task force. Growth task force thing. Okay, awesome, thank you.
So logistically, should we invite our school liaison and who else, DPW, fire chief?
I think this was just to set up the parameters, if I understood correctly.
Yeah, I mean, it's an open meeting, so I would, I almost think that it's not a terrible idea to invite our liaison, for sure. It's an open meeting, anybody would be welcome to come, and we would take people's participation as a plus. But we don't really know what we're doing yet, so I think that I wouldn't necessarily invite everybody formally.
Framework, then build up. Frame it, then build.
Yeah. Okay, so we have, we have progress on that one, we can ask them. Now we have the discussion, the only open discussion, I think, for our zoning articles is the Osmond one, for the affordable housing, age restriction. Is that true? Everything else is settled. Okay.
But it's good to talk about our presentation at town meeting too, if we have time.
It is? I almost think that that is something that might be worked on offline, and then brought back for everybody to weigh in on. Okay. I'm just gonna suggest that because of any...
For time, yeah.
So Fran and I'll do that.
Yes.
That'd be great.
Happy to sit down.
I just think we're gonna run out of time.
That's fine.
To do that, but I definitely wanna bring it back to the group. Alright, so about the Osmond, Carol has some feedback that she would like us to comment on, right?
I actually spent quite a bit of time thinking about this over the weekend, and I gave you all a little printout of my thoughts and rationale that got me there. I think our purpose here, in looking at the Osmond and what we decide to do as far as the question that's before us, is based on the fact that when the Osmond change happened, it was looking for senior housing, affordable housing, and housing that restricted to have no people under 18 years of age. Because of the rule from THCD, we can't do all three of those things, so I think our purpose here is to find the thing, find the solution that most closely meets town meeting's desires and needs. My personal opinion, after looking at it, I think we need to maintain the affordable housing piece. It's 18, 18 units. We're not in a position where, as a town, we're gonna build those units. There's, and I presume, because I typed this, you all read exactly what I said, so I'm not gonna read the whole thing to you. The Osmond in the host community agreement has, has a payment if there are school children involved. We're not gonna get that anywhere else if we did in fact build housing units to make up for these 18 units that we're not doing. If we lose our hold on affordable housing, then we're faced with 40B developments and a whole slew of other things that I don't think is really in the town's best interest. I think the affordable component was the most, is the most important portion of this housing thing. And I will tell you that I did wander around Chamberlain Street over the weekend and talk to some people on Chamberlain Street who have been there for a long time, and in their recollection, there have been three people...
Sanctuary Lane, right?
I'm sorry, Sanctuary Lane. Under the age of 18, and one was an infant, was there for a short period of time, and then there were two school age children over the course of their time in the development, and then those children were not there for the entire school career, they were there for a year or two. So I don't think the impact of children is gonna be a big impact, and I really think we need to preserve the affordable housing component, most importantly.
So, my understanding, so I had the opportunity to speak at length with Carol, twice. And I just wanna say that, so it was my initiative to sort of, to tee up removing the, or maintaining the under 18 age restriction, and contemplating affordable housing either done by the developer offsite, or the payment and loop. And as I thought about it with Carol, it occurs to me, and I don't know if it was an obvious point to everybody at the meeting, but... but if we do have off-site affordable housing, which presumably is attractive, um, it can't be age-restricted, and we will get more children without any, um, cash benefit. And I don't know that, that I, I think that I was, I'm definitely focused on the affordable housing. We've, we found ourselves sort of in violent agreement that the affordable housing is a key component to maintain. Um, if we do develop, if we ask the developer to develop, uh, or, or repurpose units, um, elsewhere in town, there is no, there is no, um, benefit or, uh, or compensation for additional schoolchildren. Um, so I thought that it would, I had not seen it that whole way, and I thought that it was worth bringing back to make sure we had the completed discussion. Um, and I definitely think that we still need to have an agreed-upon approach going to town meeting. Um, but I, I thought it was worth at least inviting this board to contemplate, um, Carol's cogent argument that I had not seen the whole way when we talked about it last time.
So, question through the chair, maybe goes back to Carol, is if we were to kind of go on the, uh, the proposal that we retain the affordable housing inventory, as you suggest, what is the impact of that? Either a financial impact or, uh, other types of impact? Is that kind of like metered out anywhere, or maybe I'm, maybe it's there, Carol, I just haven't read it through?
Is, well, from my perspective, the only financial impact that there would be is, is if there are children, school-aged children in the development, um, there would be that financial impact. But that's offset by the conditions of the host community agreement. If you don't maintain the affordable housing inventory that we have and you get down below
And then you go to 40B.
The level, then we're looking at 40Bs. And to build it elsewhere, which I mentioned in my, my little dissertation here, I don't think a payment in lieu would pay the town enough to buy the property and build a unit on for the units that we need.
We've definitely had that discussion before, and I'm not a huge fan of the payment in lieu of, um, either. I, I wanted to, I'm putting in times, I apologize for having my phone up, but now that we schedule things, I wanna make sure I remember them, right? Um, uh, I think that we face a really interesting situation here where we all have ownership in, in the, um, in the confusion, right? Every, all of our attorneys should have, might have, helped us out before we got into this fix. Um, but, uh, we did permit, in this case, we did permit that development with the age restriction on both sides. Somebody has to be over fifty-five and nobody can be under, under eighteen. Um, and we did permit it, um, mandating the affordable housing, and now we find ourselves unable to satisfy both sides of that. I feel like, you know, I, I know other, apparently other towns are facing it, too. I wonder why it wasn't caught even by the Attorney General, 'cause it seems like a big thing, but I don't know, I don't know.
Just a point of clarity, in Carol's dissertation, as she suggested, the first one, retain, retain the affordable housing, that's and remove the under eighteen restriction, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And both, both options are keeping the over fifty-five?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're essentially entertaining going back to where we were, uh, last week before we got rid of the, the, um, the under eighteen.
I just wanted to have the more, the more full discussion and help everyone.
I know we were really tired when we were talking about it.
Well, I was, again, asleep. Gary?
Um, through the chair, I just have a, a comment and a, and a question. Um, and I, I agree with a lot of what Carol has said. I think that 40Bs, um, are particularly challenging for us. And I'd also argue that the most recent 40B we've had in town has also put, aside from even enrollment numbers, has put a tremendous burden on our schools as well. Um, and just even talking informally with some of the, the school administrators about, um, you know, just, uh, how that's changed their role in terms of, um, you know, just, uh, uh, just, just had a, had an impact in, in, in what they do on a day-to-day basis. Um, so I agree, and I think that, that one of the best things we can do is if we can avoid the likelihood of a 40B, and we can continue to have some form of, of influence over what's built and what's proposed, I, I think that's really important to us. Um, my question is, I'm just curious if there's a reason that, that we select fifty-five as the age? And, and I guess I'm just thinking of, like, is there another creative option? If we said, um, and I don't even know if this would even be amenable to the, to the developers, um, but if we said sixty and older? And again, while that may not, I mean, I just, if we raise that bar a little bit, then, then maybe that's a little bit of additional protection to reduce the likelihood of, um, school-aged children living there. I don't even know if that's a.
I don't think that's within the four corners, actually. I think that bumps us up, out of what we posted on the warrant.
And I, I think the developers have already had a ton of marketing material printed, and that's.
No, I, I think there's a lot of content, uh, implications, for sure. But I'm not even sure we can think about that at this point, because it's an expansion of what we posted on the warrant.
Good.
That's, um, my thought.
Might be a worthwhile discussion going forward.
If it ma, if it makes a difference, and that would be, I, I feel like that's a consultant question, right? I would, would, what, what that feels like to me, it's not a terrible idea, is, is that we're, we're trying to work a problem, but we don't necessarily have the, the information, the professional expertise to know if that solves it for us.
Question, clarity, don't we have the same language in other districts, other than Osmond?
The same language for the, um, the formula?
With the no one under eighteen?
Yeah, both, no, no one under eighteen and the affordable housing.
So, um, do we have that? No.
Just surprised.
I didn't think so. The, the age restriction piece, uh, for no, nobody under eighteen is the piece we don't have. We have, we have somebody has to be over fifty-five.
At least one.
Okay.
And it's the, it's the eighteen statement that's causing the issue.
Right.
And we do know, I do, I am mindful and I remember that the developer is really enthusiastic to maintain that, that restriction on the eighteen, so I'm not dismissing that.
I'd be curious in terms of, either from the developer or just, you know, their perspective on it, 'cause one of the things.
Oh, I'm definitely curious about that, too. I'm not saying they're not gonna get a chance to talk ever, I'm just.
Right.
Don't misunderstand, I'm very curious.
I just wanted to add, I, I do share Carol's concerns that the payment might not be enough to buy land and build units, and that we might not actually build units.
I think that that's a guarantee, that's my concern all the way, and I brought that up when we were doing, we, for the first time in my recollection, we, uh, we instituted the, the, the thing for the Whalen-Chamberlain development where they had to, you know, they had to provide the units in town.
But it's a calculation, right?
It is a calculation.
You don't have a lot of control over it.
We can't require them to refurbish existing units, so they wouldn't add to the housing stock? Buy small houses?
So, we, we might be able to do that, and we can encourage them to do that, but that doesn't mean that we won't also have growth in the schools.
Right.
We would necessarily, we would likely have.
If a house already exists, where children could be living there and it's bought and refurbished, and children could also live in it.
Sure, oh, yeah.
That seems like a wash.
Yep, but it, it could also easily be, you know, a house that we reclaim from a couple who's lived here for a long time, and they're figuring through the system, and we are, I, by the way, I just wanna say it again, I love children. It always, always makes me tense when we do this, kind of this conversation.
Do we know how large Sanctuary Lane is compared to, this is a hundred and eighty units we're talking about?
It's forty units.
Forty units.
So they've had three instances in at least ten years.
It has affordable in it?
I just have to, it really scares me, the idea of a hundred and eighty units that could all have unlimited number of children. And I know maybe they would, maybe they wouldn't, but.
That's our conundrum, right, right there. We all understand it, right? So, so from, from your perspective, Amy, we, we take that hundred and eighty that we would have some financial balancing mitigation for. Right? Um, or we have eighteen outside that we don't.
Well, if, if we were to get some kind of compensation, can we make that compensation large enough to compensate us for what really would be the gap? So that if we're getting a fee, um, because the Osmond is over three hundred and fifty children, and we're getting a fee for their, for their, um, affordable housing, can't we request a, a larger portion versus?
So, I, I mean, you know, this is America, we can do, we can ask for anything, but it's, it's, I, I feel like that's unlikely to happen. That's a whole renegotiation of the host community agreement. By the way, would that have to change anyway, the host community agreement? Uh, for any of the solutions that we pick, or if we have, we remove the no, nobody under eighteen? Okay, so that, that's another, that's another layer of the difficulty. But I don't think we can negotiate for more money, and it isn't money that we get for the affordable housing. Um, and I absolutely celebrate the notion that we wanna avoid unfriendly 40Bs. Um, but I think the priority more is that we wanna maintain and, and develop our.
And, you know.
And protect our affordable housing stock. The argument just feels better for me that way.
I think it's more immediate, I think it's what was planned, I think it's sort of, you know, we have to make the adjustment for the law, um, and.
This is definitely a microcosm of what's gonna happen on town meeting floor, for sure. This is gonna be a very complicated, um, task.
So regardless of what we decide, will Town Council have both versions of the wording?
So really, the question tonight, I think, is do we want Town Council to have both versions as we continue to discuss? 'Cause we got rid of one last, last meeting, and that was on me. So the overall article is there, right?
It's gone.
The.
The one, the alternate one for.
So it's not a one-encompassing article with three options?
No.
I see.
So what does it mean?
So we can't even talk about the affordable housing?
We could ask for it to be put back on. Could someone on the floor of town meeting cha, change the word?
No, 'cause outside of the four corners.
But it was there a couple of weeks ago, not yet.
It's finalized tomorrow. Um, so I, you know, I, I'm, my, my personal feeling, um, is that it is better to maintain, what I, in a perfect world, if it was up to me to decide how it would be solved, and it's not an elegant solution, no matter what we do, we would maintain the under eighteen restriction because, two things. Because I think that that is what the developer is most interested in maintaining, and that was part of the permanent agreement, right? That's complicated to change, I think. And I think a hundred and eighty units, um, it, whether or not we think that we'll actually get a lot of children, I think it's a very hard sell on town meeting floor, um, as well. Um, and then, and then I would personally rather have units replicated around town versus the cash payment. 'Cause I don't think, I honestly don't think the cash payment does us very much, but.
Well, the cash payment is, is by a formula, that's a.
It is by a formula.
Right.
As is, as, as are the units being replicated, right? There's a formula for that, that we use other places in town, and that's another negotiating point, is whether we use the same formula, which I recommend, 'cause I don't recommend having a different formula for the Osmond than for anywhere else in town. But there's an argument to be made that we're problem solving.
I, I have a question for our, our staff, um, and I'm just wondering if you can give us the most recent numbers you have on what percentage of our housing stock is affordable?
Fourteen percent.
Fourteen percent.
And we have to be ten percent, right?
Ten percent, and so, so what are the, what are the numbers on, do you know the numbers on that? I'm just trying to, I'm trying to get a sense for, for something like this, what's that?
So we have, we have until the next census, right, before it becomes.
Twenty twenty census.
Twenty twenty.
No, it's on the.
Yep. And that's a function of population? So, 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 just from a process perspective, so, so we're gonna get, oh, it's actually housing units. So we don't necessarily know, but, but, I mean, so fourteen percent of our housing units now are deemed affordable?
Right.
And that's based on when? That's not based on the last census?
Ten.
Oh, that is on, okay. And we don't know how many housing units we have in town?
We get, I mean, we, we do know now, and we estimate what the twenty twenty census will say. But we don't know for certain, it's only counted as being.
Yeah, but that would give us at least an approximation. How, how much effort or work would it take to make that estimate?
I think the board has kept it pretty good, we can look back, I think the last time that was looked at was maybe a year or so ago, and the board kind of kept an up-to-date, you know, summary.
Okay. And, and I guess where I'm going is that, like, this is really, really important information for me, because if it, if it, if it shows that we're at, you know, twelve percent, and they look at numbers, and that's a, you know, that means that we're, you know, forty-eight units over, then I'm a little less concerned about it than if it shows that we're
Right.
nine units over, and, and, I, I mean, I, I realize we're not gonna have that now, but even for town meeting.
Yep.
It's good data.
Yep.
I would really, really like to, to see that estimate, and, and even if you give a, a range, I mean, I realize that everyone's always nervous about putting estimates out there, but a plus or minus, a range, or something like that, that I think could, could help us make a more informed.
And did you say it was twenty years ago?
I'm looking for it. The board has, um, I remember Jen. I heard it.
So Amy's going to get it first.
Yeah, so she estimated that we would have eleven point eighteen percent in twenty twenty.
Eleven point eight.
But I'm, I'm curious, is it actually how many units? And I'd love to know what the denominator is there.
She estimated that we would have sixty-five hundred, or six-five-eight-five housing units in twenty twenty.
Six-five-eight-five?
The denominator.
And that, and that we would have seven thirty-six affordable.
So seven thirty-six and ten percent would be seven, it would be six fifty-eight. So we would be about ninety units over, based on that estimate.
Mm-hmm. And this one?
See, part of, part of the problem, as I see it, with affordable housing is, is our, our zoning requires that if you build a development, you have to build one affordable for every ten. But no one ever builds ten, they build nineteen.
Or twenty-nine, or.
You're nine tenths of a house behind.
Right.
And everybody that comes along, does that, reduces
Right.
our access in affordable housing.
And we, and, and there's attrition, too, we lose some.
But, but I also look at it, if we're, say, eighty units over, that would mean we needed another eight. I'm, I'm just thinking of the math, I mean, that, that's a pretty substantial number of additional units we would need.
To put us at risk.
To put us at risk.
Right, so my, my question on that, though, is when a developer pays in lieu of an actual unit, is that counted in any way? Right, so what you have here is just the actual number of units. You're sitting on a pile of cash, in theory, that they've kind of contributed to, but we, I don't recall, and most developers tend to do that, right? The majority of developers will put money in the kitty.
That's their preference, yeah.
That's their preference, which we are pushing back against.
I get it, but, I mean, the reality of it is, we have this money set aside, and when they do that, and they build, it actually hurts when they do the census, to, when you look at the actual number
Yes.
of units, unless you start taking that money and building or.
Yes.
Which nobody wants all those units in one place, it, it's better to mix them in.
Yeah, yes.
Yes, exactly.
So you're actually even a little bit, probably more at risk, um, at, at some of this.
A task force item might be, to Fran's point, through the chair, uh, in the five years that we've been on the board, we haven't spent any money, and it's, it's, it's on another committee anyways, but.
Yeah, I mean, I don't recall very many, other than the, the units that Mr. Mastrow, the applicant is proposing to, I can't recall, off the top of my head, a whole bunch more of affordable units have been built on-premise, where the developer's building.
There's been, I mean, there, there was a couple, oh, there was one, I can remember.
Yeah, we're talking, yeah.
One, I know.
Use one hand.
So I, I definitely think that, um, and I actually would, would take this conversation and make sure we wrap it into our growth conversation, right? There's, there is definitely, um, purpose behind making sure we have a approach that is protective and sensible and, and.
But visionary, too, right?
Yeah, exactly.
I don't know if the twenty's in the pot, but.
Yeah, I agree. I definitely see you coming back for that, that's awesome, I love that idea. So that's, that's the, that's the first level of question. Um, the second level of question is, um, we did meet, and, um, and we do. The second level of question is, we did meet, and, and we do have to settle on sort of an approach and a formula, and whether it's, you know, the hard question is whether it's going to be payment in lieu or reclaiming units or so forth. And I know you guys had your hands up. Do you, do you want to come forward now at this point? Yeah? Come on, forward.
Vin wants to speak in a moment, also.
I'll come forward, if you want.
Roy McTell, Legacy Farms. If you are, in fact, contemplating lifting the restriction on the children, on the 18 units, I know Vin doesn't want to go that route, so, but right now, that's illegal, just so we're all clear on that.
Right now, everything's illegal, Roy.
No, but I'm saying that particular language, so even if you leave it, you can't-
We've got the tiger by the tail. We got it.
Okay, so you understand that?
Yep.
So what I'm hoping is, there could be, especially at town meeting, but equally as important, this board supporting, is a couple of options. Cash is one of them, you know, whatever the amount is. And the other hopefully is either to acquire units to bring online as affordable or build them. Frankly, hopefully at the, at the developer's choice, because the way the ordinance, the rule is written now, for every nine units of market rate you build, the 10th unit has to be an affordable, which basically says you can't build your 11th and 12th-
Yep.
-until such time. So that becomes a real burden. If you're doing it on-site, no problem, because you're there. But if you're off-site, if you have to build them, number one, you don't know if you can even find a site to build them. Who knows how long it takes to get it permitted, designed, and everything else. So basically, that shuts down your project till that happens. At least if you can acquire somewhere in town, units that become affordable units, that makes it a little less daunting a challenge, because you buy one, you've got some time before you need to buy the second one, some time before you buy the third, because you're going to build nine more units. So at least that gives you a little breathing room to keep going. Obviously, the cash version is, ideally, from the developer's point of view, is the cleanest, but I understand your point of view, it's great to get the cash, but what are you going to do with it? So I think, in perfect world, if you could eliminate the restriction on the age on-site, now remember now, we're not talking about 180 units that are going to have children. 160, Vin will tell you, he's got basically de facto age restricted in the marketing materials and in the deeds as it is. So you're talking about 18 units. And that's why when I hear other projects, is it possible you could have two or three children? Yeah, it's possible, but there are some safeguards in that. And I know Vin doesn't want to go that route, but I think at least if you lift that restriction, even though no one wants to use it, it's an escape hatch, worst-case scenario, if the other things don't pass the town meeting. Because if the other things don't pass the town meeting, whether they are, and you left that in place, the project's in limbo. There's no place to go. So that's my concern.
I understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening. As we talked about, it's not a question of wanting to remove the restriction. I mean, we've got a permit that requires, your bylaw required, there's financing, there's seven units that are presently under construction, there's two building permits are underway. There's people who have bought in on the concept that there aren't going to be kids there, because there's a restriction of 18. So it's not that we don't want it, we can't. I mean, we're, we're trying to avoid the litigation that involves us, and unfortunately would involve the town. And the concept of the variety of options in the lieu thing, we think is, is the way to go. The first comment in that regard is that the way your amendment is written now, we would pay for the, for the price of, or the sales price of an affordable three-bedroom. And I understand that that's language that came out of another section of your bylaw in regards to flexible developments. But flexible developments aren't limited to two-bedrooms. I mean, we have a restriction in-
They are, they are at times.
They are?
Yeah.
Well, okay, I didn't, I didn't realize that. But I don't think it's appropriate to say, pay a three-bedroom, and we can only build the two, and therefore sell the two. So that's our first instance. We think if you're going to do the payment in lieu and the nature of price, it, it can't be more than what we're allowed to build. We had a, a meeting with the chair, and we talked about some numbers, and we went back and looked up things. So we've got some different numbers, but we proposed two different scenarios. One, where you would, would simply take, and all the affordables are basically as part of a three, the triplex buildings. So if you take the, the affordable out and you build it off-site, that building kind of becomes two simplex units. So all this would necessitate amendment of the site plan, but basically, you're just removing that, you build one of the, the three units in a three, making them two, separating by a thing that becomes centric, so it requires an amendment of your, of your decision. So we'll talk about, one, just taking the affordable out, making the payment, and then they become simplex in place. And then the other, the other scenario, in, in the hope would be that you'd leave all these options open, the couple that Roy suggested, you wouldn't have even been building off-site or whatever. But then also converting, paying a higher price if we convert the affordable into a market. Because if we just take the affordable out and have to give you a payment, we're not getting anything from that. You know, we're, we're right now, and we provided numbers, where basically the cost of the construction and the sale price in a state has confirmed a $208,500, the sales price for a two-bedroom. It's basically costing us roughly $200,000 bucks to build that. So there's roughly a $10,000, $9,000, $10,000 return on that. So we can't simply say, we'll take it out, we'll give you 200, because then you don't have any income coming off to set that 200. So the scenario you want to look at is, one, a price for removal of that, putting it off-site. Vin will give some updated numbers than what we had at the meeting. And then a higher scenario, if we can replace the affordable with a market, you get more money that you can take off-site someplace. Okay, you understand the two concepts?
The major thing I got out of that is that it's better for you to build the affordable housing, because then you get some money. And-
Off-site? Yeah.
And easier.
Yeah.
There's a lot of words to get there. No offense.
Can I just make a, a comment here? I mean, I think this is a complicated one for us. This is going to get really complicated at town meeting. And I think just explaining things in, in, in words and whatnot is going to be really hard-pressed at, at town meeting. So I, I understand what you're saying, but this is just my opinion. If, if you want to convince town meeting of something, it's probably going to take more than just you speaking. I mean, it's-
Oh, we have numbers. We show a whole scenario.
But you haven't even shown those to us. Maybe you have to, Mary, I haven't seen them.
No, that's-
And I just, I, I think, like, like, I'm hard-pressed to make even a recommendation of some, some kind, just based on people hypothesizing or kind of stating in general senses what those numbers are. Like, for me, I think this is complicated, it's messy, the decision is not with us, the decision is with town, at town meeting, and, and I think that, just, just my recommendation, but, but I, I'd put a lot more effort into preparation for that than, than what I've seen so far, because it's, it's hard for me to, to have a firm opinion based on what, what you guys have shared with us today.
I like going back to your comment, if there's enough leeway in what's out there, then these still are affordable, but they're not counted towards the inventory. So if you have enough surplus, that may be the ultimate way to go.
So let me, in the interest of time, let me ask the board this. Do you have narrower constraints that you are comfortable with? Right? We did vote to take off the, on the lower age, no, to leave in place the lower age restriction. We don't know if we can have that back. But can people, you know, sort of narrow their focus of where we want to target our answer? If, and if it is that you want to maintain the under, or maintain the under 18, or get rid of the, oh, good God, mine, get rid of the under 18, definitely put it out there, and we'll see if it's possible. So Carol, what's your?
I would like to see that come back. And my other comment, I think I heard you say that according to the calculation of what the payment in lieu of, you feel is too high? I, I personally am not interested in negotiating a lower payment in lieu of. I don't think the payment in lieu of is adequate to provide a separate house on a separate property to fulfill the requirement. So I am not in favor of changing that, and I don't think we're in a position to say, okay, that's too much.
Right.
Can I just make one comment about the last meeting? This is a moving target, and I thought we left two weeks ago having maintained that restriction, and that's kind of the way-
We did.
Right.
We did. And I accept that criticism on behalf of the board.
Yeah, no, I, I understand. Believe me, I've gone back and forth myself on, on this and what's best.
And we're not, we're not doing it to make it harder, right? This is a complicated thing, but-
Right. But I do have, all my buyers have that in their master deed right now.
Yep.
And that language that mirrors what was passed, I think, in 2015 at town meeting, that is in their master deed. And in many cases, that's, I think, not to speak for them, but I think I have spoken to every one of my buyers, and many of them have a buying into this community for that very reason. Certainly, it's not the only reason, but it's a, it's a lifestyle, and it's not an anti-children thing like you mentioned, because everybody, almost everybody I know has had children, and they have grandchildren, and that's all part of wanting to stay in this community and being close to family, but not have children immediately in the community. And, you know, that, that's a very real situation. It's, it's not easy to get sales when you don't have finished units built.
I think we all, we all appreciate, we heard you when you said it, and I'm not trying to cut you off, but I'm just, the time, and we are not dismissing that, at least, I'm sure we're not. We understand that. We also understand that, that it isn't necessarily legally tenable, and we have to solve that, right? So we, we understand what you really want, and we're trying to work with a solution that satisfies everybody as best as possible.
And Chair?
Hold on one second. Right.
I was going to put my hat on.
Do you have a, do you have a preferred solution?
Oh.
Or constraints narrowing down, narrowing down the target?
I'm just going to go back to what Carol wrote, her preference and her statements on that. And if there's any way we can make that fit-
So Carol's preference, after the discussion, is to remove the under 18, and she is not interested in negotiating down the compensatory costs.
Pilot is the pilot anyways, from the formula.
Right. So is that what you're saying you agree with?
Yes and, yes and no. Because the whole thing is, it's a deeper issue than that, but my immediate preference is that, yes.
Okay, perfect. Yes.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I just want to clarify.
Yes.
Carol, your position is that we-
Remove the under 18.
Remove the under 18 restriction.
And keep the affordable component in development.
Got it. Yes, okay.
My other statement, which was unrelated, is in response to the comment that they feel that the payment in lieu of is too high by the calculation.
Yes.
So that's just your feedback on that.
Which wouldn't factor in yet.
And I have a question for the developer. I'm just curious, since we started these discussions, how many additional contracts have you signed?
I don't have the exact number, but I would say probably three or four.
Okay.
I think this started at the end of January, so I'd say that's about the number. I'd rather not disclose the number of sales we have to date altogether. And actually, if, if I could, maybe to address your point about not having any real information from us at that meeting, can I just-
You can pass those out, for sure, but we're, I'm going to keep going around the table.
Okay.
Deb?
I, I think the only way to go, to let everybody in the town know exactly what the situation is, and give everybody an A or a B, to include both languages in, is important.
And feedback from the-
And, and, and feedback from each side, so that when it's presented, it's presented in a way that people can understand.
Well, that's good.
It's a couple ones.
Okay.
Good job.
How about you, Deb?
I'm a techie guy, so I don't talk, I don't beat around the bush.
Yeah.
Remove the restriction for under 18.
Remove the restriction for under 18 and keep the affordable in there. Carol's idea.
My preference is to leave the restriction for under 18 and allow them to, allow them to purchase units off-site and resell them as affordable, rather than having to construct new ones. Okay, Anna, can I clarify, because I'm not sure I've really understood this before? They're allowed to build 180 units in Legacy Farms, but because 18 were supposed to be affordable, now he can only build 162 if we take the affordable out, which is the problem, because it's not as profitable, if you can't build 162.
Yeah, and I think that there's a negotiation point in there, that they are going to want to build a few of them not as affordable. I think that that's a, that's a moving piece. Or potentially moving piece.
Right.
So I have, first, a question for the developer, and then I, then I'll give you my perspective. Mr. Barber, you mentioned that if you get rid of the under 18 restriction, that's illegal. Is that correct?
The, the restriction?
Yeah.
Well, it, it's illegal in the sense that it makes your bylaw illegal, in, in the sense that DHC D won't allow, except that counting towards your inventory.
It's not illegal. It's contrary to a policy of DHC D.
So he can't have a full-
It will not count them.
I understand that.
It makes your bylaw impossible to perform.
Right. You can't comply with the bylaw.
Correct.
No matter, if we don't do anything, we can't comply with the bylaw. We're not complying now with the bylaw. So if we take out the 18, then we do comply with the bylaw.
Right, but this project is not subject to an amendment of the bylaw, which means we're in litigation over the validity of the law.
Not yet or not.
Okay.
Let's, can we go around the table, but hold it?
The article takes care of that, that you would be subject to the change.
I see.
I just wanted to hear what Elaine had said.
Yep. No, I'm glad, because I'm, I didn't, wasn't seeing out of this, this piece in my head.
I'm in Carol's camp.
I think I'm in Carol's camp, but I'd like to understand what the estimates are. And again, I also think that, given the level of sensitivity to school populations, I think you have a really, really tough time selling this to town meeting.
We, by the way, we are in this together, just to be clear.
We're not going to have an article at town meeting what we're doing, and I understand you from the viewpoint of a recommendation to, to town meeting, or something that's very simple, has absolutely a higher chance of success than anything else.
Understand, understand, fair point, but again, I, maybe I'm just sharing too much of my opinions here, but I wouldn't, like, I, I'd be cautious about going in and trying to negotiate a lower payment in lieu of, when there's already a lot of sensitivity here. And that's just my opinion, but again, I, I worry a lot about how town meeting is going to respond to this concept, and I, I think that it's a, it's a tough road ahead. So I just, yeah, leave it at that.
I totally agree that it's a tough road at town meeting. I, I personally, and, you know, thank you, Carol, for laying this out, because it's such a confusing issue. I, I would agree to retain the affordability, but I don't think that would pass at town meeting, because I think that the reaction is going to be, we have to retain no one under 18. And that's, so I think that's different than what you think is going to happen at town meeting, but, you know, it's interesting. So can, is it fair to say you're in Deb's camp, that we hold on to both so far? You don't, you haven't framed it down? So what we're presenting to town meeting, or, you know, what the articles will look like? So we don't know if it's possible to do the, to, to reinstate, to, to take off the age restriction. We don't know if that, this is even possible. Right? So right now, we're talking, if you had a preference on either side, are you on the both camp? Keeping both in play? Or do you have a preference to maintaining the affordability straight up and removing the under 18 restriction? Or leaving the under 18 restriction and mandating the offsite affordability using some mechanism, either cash payment or providing the units?
My sense is that if there's two options, and it's clearly, you know, town meeting can vote for one or the other, but not both, you know, like if they pass one, the other one is no longer an issue. I mean, how does it happen?
Yeah, I think town meeting could, I mean, the board could make that motion, but...
Yeah. So, I think it's going to be enormously confusing at town meeting if we have two options. I think there needs to be one option.
Okay, and do you have one that you favor?
My favorite way to go forward would be Carol's suggestion.
All right, I favor the one that was outlined by Amy, which is leaving the restriction and purchasing in the units offsite as affordable. But I think it's clear that we at least need to investigate if we can put that, this option back on the warrant and then have this conversation.
And I did want to, that's the option that Zach recommended? The original, removing the age restriction?
Yeah. Yep.
And I also wanted to mention that the number of affordable units is one for every 10. So if the size of the development is reduced, then there's fewer affordable units that have to be provided.
Yes. Yes.
And so if no one else is going with both, then I would like to revote.
What would your vote be then?
My vote would be for the affordable in the development to remove the number, the 18 restriction, but keep the affordable.
Okay. So, I just, we have a challenge. We have a real challenge. So we're going to get the information about whether or not it can go back, right? And then we don't meet again until we will necessarily meet before town meeting because we do not yet know. Will we meet one more time? But not before town meeting. We do have room reserved for us. Town meeting starts at 7:00, so I would suggest that everybody be prepared to meet at about 6:00. Before that night.
I do, because we're exteriorly kind of wrestling with this whole thing.
We sure are.
And I think we need to go have a coherent summation of the issue and be able to articulate it in a way that's very, I want to say easily digestible, or at least easily understood to entertain discussion at town meeting.
I agree.
Otherwise, it's just going to be a...
A thrash, is my...
That's a nice way to put it, yes. Really.
Okay, so it is April 22nd. Town meeting is May 6th. What is April 29th? Is that Zach again?
April 29th.
It's no your vote. Sorry, I cannot...
One of us has to be there, too.
April 29th is no your vote, yeah.
All right. Sorry, thank you. I got to get that on there. May 1st is a Zach meeting. Okay, May 1st. I can't do the certioris, but if you want to, if you want to take it. Way to pass the buck.
How strongly do you feel about April 30th?
All right, what about May 2nd?
I could do it.
I can do that.
I can do it.
All right. And is 7:00 o'clock the earliest anybody can meet?
Dance rehearsal, dress rehearsal that afternoon, so I can't...
So what time can you get here?
I'm sorry, so I wouldn't, I can't do early.
Yeah, no, I understand. Don't apologize. What time can you, I don't know yet.
I don't always know how long that's going to take. It starts at 3:15. She's got to be in 40 inches.
Listen, I have been in those shoes.
Yeah, so it seems like it would be done by 7:00, but I can't...
So is it safer to do 8?
We're 7:30.
7:30? Let's do 7:30. Don't apologize. Everybody's got a life. And you're lucky to have a little one still dancing.
I know.
I'm going to New York City to see my little one dance, and she's 27, so... Okay, so Thursday, May 2nd, do we have, can you look at the rooms?
This room is not available, but this can use the lower level.
Basement?
Basement?
Okay. All right, so Thursday, May 2nd at 7:30 PM in the basement for this discussion. Yes, Mr. McDowell?
It's a bit confusing, maybe, for this, because if we're having a difficult time with it, you can imagine a town meeting.
I think they're going to love this.
So, what I would request is you allow us to put together a very succinct PowerPoint presentation that we'd be happy to share with the board for approval prior to town meeting. I think this is going to be very, very clear if people want to stand. Otherwise, people are going to blaze over and who knows where it goes. So, what I would also hope and maybe clarify, if you in fact do choose to lift the age restriction, for whatever reason Ben doesn't want to go in that direction, I'm hoping he still has the option to do something and acquire units offsite. Is that currently the way the law is written?
Say that again.
In other words, if you pass lifting, if you pass lifting the age restriction, which means he can build affordable on site, but if he chooses not to, does he still have the option to reduce potentially the size of the project or leave it depending in buy or acquire units offsite for the purposes of affordability?
So, that will be the subject of the conversation on May 2nd. Okay? We're all invested in finding something that works, and...
The numbers that are getting together, can we get copies of that so we can see? Because maybe it's some mix of all of that.
Say, ask your question again, I'm sorry.
The numbers that you're looking at, where you rank on the 10%?
Yeah, absolutely.
Can we have that for the May 2nd?
Sure.
Yeah, absolutely. No, yeah, we want everything on the table. Let's mush it around. And listen, somebody gets a free drink at Fran's going, oh, I think I'm on with a solution that works.
Free? Who's paying for it?
Me.
It should work.
Because it's not going to be me. All right, May 2nd, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I suggest maybe if Ray could attend the May 2nd meeting, not to run up expenses, but if he could have his direct feedback on...
I will contemplate that for sure.
Unless we have it in advance.
Yep, I'll contemplate that for sure.
Very much a bag in the back.
Oh, thank you. Okay.
I have a suggestion.
Yep.
So for May 2nd, if there's time, could we have a draft PowerPoint of all the zoning articles we're going to present at town meeting so that we could give feedback? Or just maybe before the meeting?
Do you want a PowerPoint, I guess that reflects the town meeting presentation, do you want a PowerPoint for every article or just certain articles?
So, do you think it's helpful to the public?
I agree.
It is. I think so, too.
And even this one, this particular article?
It's going to be multiple files.
Well, not just the words, but if we could somehow do a visual diagram of what the proposal is all about, and maybe you have pictures of...
A Venn diagram.
Well, anything, right? Or even just say, hey, here's the units, here's an affordable unit, right? If you buy, if you payment in lieu, this is how it would move. And just so you can kind of like have a story, because without a story, you're just kind of, you're spilling facts. And people are going to be like, at this point, anyway, they're going to be like this. They're going to be like...
One of the things that I think is really like blowing everybody away is that trying to replace these affordable units and having money in lieu doesn't mean anything to anybody because there's no concrete site. There's no concrete anything. It's just a pile of money. And so we're not doing what we were set to do.
We're over time. I definitely think that we should have the PowerPoint. I'm not sure, to be honest with you, that I can commit to being prepared for the 2nd, but I will sure try.
Is it... Well, I guess if we could look at a draft of the warrant, so we could just kind of go through it and see.
Pack it, there's only articles from here.
So just what we've seen today's?
These numbers are final, these article numbers are final.
Unless one is added and then it will be numbered.
Muriel, just a suggestion is you could delegate.
We'll know by tomorrow.
Delegate the PowerPoint.
Yep, stop. I can't even process quite yet, okay? Thank you, though. I got, I know that's an option. So, David, we have ignored your 495 I-90 interchange again.
Other two or four weeks won't matter.
Okay, I appreciate that.
But I just, if we could have some say in their design, we don't want to wait too long.
No, I totally agree.
Yeah.
And maybe we could meet offline and just talk about it a little bit and see what we bring forward. Because I feel really badly that we haven't gotten to it tonight, also...
It's very hard before town meeting, so let's get all that stuff done first.
I appreciate that. Okay.
Madam Chair, I have a request to live for the 13th, and I guess this, depending on some of Fran's feedback on this and Elaine's. Because Fran and I were the last people standing from the board that had the agreement to have the intersection at Wood Street in West Main Street updated. If we could have, I don't know, if you'd like a refresh of that, like maybe a five, 10-minute presentation, if we could fit it in on the 13th, or if that would be rather something we should do after the election.
Is related to the downtown quarter budget?
No, it's from like two years ago.
So here's my recommendation on that, Frank. Make, shoot Elaine and John and myself an email, and we will look at when it can go on to a meeting. Detail out John.
Oh, the new guy.
Thanks, John.
John, our new principal planner.
I think my mind is John Wesley.
He's got a name tag everywhere.
And we will, but frame your concerns and the timeframe and the information, and we will talk about it.
The reason I asked for it now is I was wondering if Fran wanted to participate.
If you're going to participate, Frank, I'd love to participate. I'm trying to think of...
Pen was chair, this dates back to that. And Mr. Mastriani's development. Open to news, added traffic to the intersection.
Oh, I gotcha. I was in the wrong place.
Lumber Street.
I'm not saying Lumber, I'm sorry.
You said Wood Street.
You said Wood Street.
I'm tired. Lumber Street.
Oh, lumber.
Clear sold this house.
Yes, right.
Do you want a motion to your...
I do. I want to...
Can I ask one more question?
You can ask one more question.
This is really, hopefully, a short one, but I'm curious if people have any opposition to moving our standard start time forward to 7:00 instead of 7:30?
I have no problem with that.
And part of it, for two reasons. Number one, because I think that we all sort of lose focus later it gets. And secondly, for our professional staff.
Yep.
It's also particularly hard on them, so I don't...
I'm open to 7:00.
Well, we're probably not going to get on any earlier.
Okay.
I'm not open to 7:00, but you work in town, right? Are you traveling or you're... I travel.
I work in Boston.
Marlboro.
Fran has a 6:00 AM flight.
I just, I mean, Selectman, I realize, Selectman meet at 6:30 on Tuesdays. I'm not saying we...
I think that maybe we take it up with our new board. How about that?
Fair enough. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Can I say something for y'all?
Quickly.
As I've been looking for, I have a...
You have to come up?
Lyme's disease is probably my...
You have to come up. People can't hear you, and you have to introduce yourself? It's open public meeting law, Mrs. LeFonier.
So I was looking around for one floor apartment, and I went to a bunch, and I went to the ones with legacy. And I couldn't move in there because they don't have elevators. So there's no handicap on second or third floors. And there's no designated handicap on the first floor, but they're calling first floor units handicap, but you'd have to wait for one to come up because they're all gone. And how many handicap people there, I don't know. So when I was thinking tonight, we were talking about that development with the under, and there's another one in town, too, that has one handicap unit on the bottom floor, and they would have to move out for somebody to move in. And I'm not, I don't consider myself handicapped. Don't read that way. There are people that need it a lot more than I do. But it's the Lyme's disease thing, and it's not going to get better. It's just going to get worse over the years. So, I decided to look around, and I came up against this. And then I'm looking at this, and they do have an elevator in the basement. And I'm all for basement parking. I think that's a smart idea to put underground parking. But I'm hoping they have elevators to the second and third floor because there will be no handicap outlets at all in that entire building if they don't.
Okay.
Because there's no first floor apartments.
I agree.
And there's a, you know, this is the third...
I think they'll have to then.
Thirty units in town that don't have elevators.
Parking in the garage is for the residents, and so the elevator was intended for that.
I would assume that they would...
I'm hoping it's intended for the fourth floor.
But that's a good...
It's a good asking.
Yeah, that's a good thing to make sure.
This is just a thought, because I've been to three units, and none of them are really handicap accessible.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
One of the buildings with the use, the four-story building does have elevators.
Does it?
Okay. John, did you have something you wanted to say before that I was ignoring?
Yes, the one, I don't know if you knew about it, but we did, yeah, we wanted to address the Whisper Way application for next hearing. So right now, it's not being advertised, but it is a modification to the special permit. It may be a minor modification, so we're not sure if it needs to be advertised, but we wanted the board's opinion as to whether you feel like we should just, out of an abundance of caution, advertise it so that there's no issues moving forward.
For the new layout you're talking?
Yes.
Oh, I think...
Yeah, I don't think that's a minor.
I would make it public.
Yeah, I do, too.
That's a huge change.
We don't have too much a butter interest. It's a little bit of a, but I still think that it's safer to advertise it, probably.
We'll advertise. Deadline's tomorrow, which is why we wanted to ask.
Thank you.
I hate to not advertise it, and then someone has...
Oh.
No kidding.
Sounds like we're all saying the same thing.
I think that usually, you know, this published on Thursday, we'll have to be invited this day.
Plenty of time? Okay, thank you.
People are used to looking for plenty of people with ads on Thursday.
If they're used to looking for the ads.
Can I move to adjourn?
Sorry, just a second. Just to answer your question, looking at the floor plans, the elevator does go up to the residential.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you, John.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys.